I will call the meeting to order. This is the September 28, 2022, meeting of the State Board of Education. My name is Oliver Olson. I am the Chair of the State Board. We'll start with a call of the roll, and then we'll see if there are any amendments to the agenda.
Can please. Here. Jenna O'Farrell?
Here.
Jennifer Samuelson?
Here.
Patrick Brown?
Here.
Kami Colby?
I'm here.
Gabrielle Lucci?
Here.
Lyle Jepson?
Here.
Tom Lovett?
Here.
Oliver Olson?
Present.
Mary Severton?
Dan French?
Here.
Are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, not seeing any. So before we move on to public to be heard, and I do know that we have members of the public who wish to be heard, at least online, I did want to welcome members of the public who are joining us today. This is the first in-person State Board meeting that we have held since the start of the pandemic, so it's now been a few years. And I just want to thank, start by thanking the educators, both here and across the state of Vermont. And we had the opportunity this morning to visit and check in with local schools in this area, get to hear from educators. And I know I speak for the full board here, that we are just so grateful for all the important work that our educators have been doing over these very difficult past few years. And also want to recognize that while the worst of the pandemic is in the rearview mirror, there are a number of challenges that will be with us and will persist with us for some time, and our educators really are on the front lines. So with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item B, which is public to be heard. And what I'd like to do first is just get an assessment of how many members of the public wish to address us, so we can allocate time. I know we have at least one member of the public online, Suzanne, who wishes to address the board. Do we have anybody else online? And do we have anybody here in the audience that wishes to address the board? And I, sorry, I should introduce Maureen and Suzanne, who are sort of operating mission control for us today. And for those, so before we do that, are there any, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address us? I didn't see any hands. Is there a sign-up sheet?
There is a sign-up sheet at the front of the stage, but no one's actually.
Okay, wonderful. So for callers on the phone, I believe it's you dial *5 to be recognized. And I know Kate LaRose had emailed. She was looking to address the board. Are there any other members? If you press *5, you'll be recognized. Maureen, do you see anyone?
No longer there, so *5, two, raise your hand, and then you will be unmuted.
If I may, there's just one person on the phone who raised their hand.
Oh, there is?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Okay, so if you could unmute, Suzanne, if you wouldn't mind unmuting the person on the phone?
Yes, awesome.
Excellent. Kate, I'm assuming that's you? But we can't hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Kate LaRose, and I'm a Northeast Kingdom resident. I shared my concerns at last month's board meeting that medically vulnerable students are being systemically pushed out and denied free appropriate public education during an ongoing pandemic. I want to start by thanking the board and agency of education for considering my input at last month's meeting, and extend my appreciation to Secretary French for reminding local education agencies of their legal obligations to students. Though my student now has asked to stay in person instruction, I continue to speak out because I know this is not the case for many, and that we are unfortunately currently in a family in Vermont. Over the past 16 months, I've become increasingly alarmed by the lack of alignment I have noticed in our state's educational and public health leadership when it comes to moving forward in an equitable way. Though the pandemic has been difficult for everyone, especially schools, it has hit families with disabilities the hardest, and this continues to be the case. Unfortunately, the worst of the pandemic is still yet to come and happening now for high-risk families. I am here again today to ask that this disproportionate harm be acknowledged, and that meaningful action be taken, not a year from now when monitoring schools via death audit, but as reports of harm come in. There's a saying that goes, "If there's a discrepancy between what you say and what you do, I'm going to believe what you do every time." A week after Secretary French's brief email went out to superintendent, several LEAs continued to summarily deny masking requests via IEC and 504 meetings. I couldn't help but wonder if this might be attributed to the historical lack of alignment between words and actions in this matter, and I was reminded of these three examples. The June 2021 email to superintendent from the AOE making it clear the expectations that schools are not to impose masking. Secretary French's October 2021 attendance at a Kanan School Board meeting in which he himself was maskless in a school gymnasium during an active outbreak going against his own agency's guidance. At that meeting, he congratulated the school board, the first in the state to drop protections, "are doing such a great job keeping students safe," and boasted about their high student vaccination rate. This was despite having the lowest vaccination rate in the state and a lower rate than Florida at the time, by the way. And also a publicized March 2022 email from Secretary French to an acting superintendent which ridiculed her decision to keep staff and students safe via masking. So perhaps, and it's no wonder, that families are still being denied protections as of today, though some districts won't even consider masking for the 504 IEC possibility. Others are claiming that doing so would, quote, "fundamentally alter the nature of their programming," which is an odd excuse to make about a modification that was recently made statewide for more than 12 continuous months. Our children deserve better than this. Whether it be an issue of needing intervention, assistance, support, whatever you'd like to call it, it's not too much to ask in this moment that meaningful action be taken to protect those who are most at risk. This morning, I turned to my child, and I asked her what she'd like to share with you about the last year and a half of her life. This is what she said. "Not being able to go to school was really awful, and it made me really sad, and a lot of people don't have the courage to self-advocate. I want the State Board and agency to advocate and stand up for kids like me." I would again like to thank AOE leadership for their words. Now, we need action. To echo the words of my child, please advocate and stand up for the students who need it most. This moment calls for nothing less than an urgency of equity in both words and actions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kate. Would you be willing to submit that in writing, only because, I don't know about others, but I had difficulty hearing everything, and I want to make sure that we have everything you said.
Certainly, thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other members of the public, either here in the audience, or, and I see a gentleman in the audience, or online? So, gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the microphone there. So if you wouldn't, if you'd be so kind as to state your name for the record?
My name's Ethan Bowen. I am the Board Chair of Rochester Stockbridge Unified District. I'm here with many of my counterparts from the WRVSU Supervisory Union concerning your decision.
Oh, we will be invited, when we get, so you're?
No, I know. I have to leave.
Oh, I see.
I didn't arrange, I have to pick up my son at 3:00 at school, so it's an hour back.
Okay, got it. Just so you know, your colleagues will also have the opportunity.
They're going to give you, I think, a very well-reasoned case. We've been through this decision before with Ripton. And I wanted to talk a little bit, I wanted to talk more about the spirit of the SU, and that an SU is a relationship. And believe me, we are still dealing with the Act 46 reverberations throughout all our communities. We alone went through a near-merger, had to have, they voted to unmerge Stockbridge, then we got them back. Same thing happened, some other things happened with Tunbridge and Chelsea, and we have worked really hard to create this SU, to bring in the professional people we need, and they're doing a great job right now. We're talking about education in our meetings. We're not talking about mergers. We still have a high school building to deal with, and that's going to be its own thing coming up. But what I wanted to talk about was this idea of this relationship, and how hard it is to forge it, and how hard we've been working since Act 46, and since the whole reconfiguration of the two districts and putting them together. That, well, let me just tell you this story. When Ripton came to us, they talked to Jamie first. They had a good meeting with him, a couple of meetings with him. Then they came to meet us, and they talked to us, they presented their argument, and we were very taken with them, and we were very interested in what they had to say. And we struggled mightily to decide whether to bring them in. And we made, for very many of the same reasons you're going to hear today, about size, about scope, about what we can afford, about what becomes too expensive for us, not to take them in. But I like to think that they came in the front door, and they said, "Hello, here we are, we'd like to join you, we like what you do, here's what we are." One of the things that bothers me about the way this is happening right now is that we haven't heard from Lincoln at all. There's been no relationship. And as I said, relationship is the foundation of an SU, where we've gotten to know each other, whereas Ripton did. Ripton really reached out and made a hand for it. And I just feel, you know, if your job is to support education and keep these relationships of an SU going well together, to have a forced marriage, as it were, is starting us off on the wrong foot. So as I say, you're going to get a lot more numbers and facts, bussing, and other details about what we can afford and what we can do in distances. But I wanted to give you sort of the spirit that I felt about this decision. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Maureen or Suzanne, are there any other members of the public online or on the phone? If you could press *5 to be recognized? And if you wouldn't mind, Suzanne, letting us know if you see anyone, anyone else in the audience? Okay, not seeing any. We will now move on to Agenda Item C, and we will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting for public comment as well. So if we missed anyone, there will be another opportunity. So Agenda Item C is to review and approve the minutes of the State Board of Education's August 12, 2022, meeting. Could I have a motion?
Yes.
It's been moved by the gentleman to the right of me, Mr. Lovett. Is there a second?
I seconded it.
Seconded by Mr. Jepson. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Any corrections? Not seeing or hearing any? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of adopting the minutes of August 12, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand?
Yes.
Those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand? Are there any abstentions? Seeing none, it appears that the motion has carried unanimously, and indeed, the motion has carried unanimously. We shall now transition to Item D, Board Announcements. Are there any board announcements? Not seeing any. We will move on to Item E, which is our student report. Gabrielle?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm very sorry that I couldn't make it in person today, but I'm hoping that I'll be able to make it to the future event in person sometime. So it's been our first month back at school in my district and in a lot of places in our state. And I think we've done a pretty good job adjusting from, you know, our summer mindset back to our beginning-of-the-year school mindset. I think it was a little bit hard at first. We were all feeling a little lethargic and a little stuck in summer, but I think that as we've gone through the first two weeks, and we've brought back club meetings and after-school events, it definitely helped to energize our student body, and it seems that all students are very happy to be back at school. I don't think I have anything else to say aside from that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Gabrielle. And actually, that reminds me, I do want to take a moment to recognize Gabrielle's predecessor, Angelita Peña, who is a student here at Mount Abe School, and unfortunately, she's not able to join us today. But I did want to take a moment just to thank her for her service on the board and tell her community what a phenomenal asset she was to the board. So wishing her well and her continued studies here at Mount Abe. Wonderful. So that takes us to Item F, which is to hear an update from the Special Education State Advisory Panel. And I, we did have somebody lined up. Maureen?
I've just got to get it out loud twice.
Okay. Perhaps, she, she did indicate she was going to be here in person. I'm not seeing her.
I'm not seeing her.
Okay. And she, Katie, if you're online, if you could press *5 to be recognized? Okay. We'll hold that item open and return to it if Katie joins us later on and if we have Okay. So that then brings us to Item G, which is the appointment to the Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission. So Secretary French, I believe you're going to walk us through that.
Yeah, in your packet, you have a recommendation from me to appoint David Young. He has served in this role previous.
Yes. Is, are these mics only for the camera, or do they project out on the speakers?
They're only for the camera.
They're only for the camera? Okay. If we speak louder, I think, okay.
They're set up here, too.
Yeah, the chairs aren't as comfortable as those appear to be, but you're welcome to join us up here. We'll, we'll take a brief pause while the, we wait for the circular saw to recede.
We do not want to slow the bathroom construction down.
I know. Sure.
All righty. Secretary French?
In your packet, you'll find a recommendation from me to appoint David Young to the Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission. Mr. Young has served in this capacity previously. This is more or less routine annual action that the board would consider. I will point out, Mr. Young is no longer superintendent in South Burlington, he's now superintendent for Catholic schools in the Burlington area. But he's done an excellent job in his position, and I'm pleased to recommend him again for it.
Could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved to appoint David, apologies.
Young.
David Young as Vermont's representative to the Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Jennifer Samuelson. Any discussion, questions?
Last time we were present, no discussion really, and David told us a little bit more about it, but I know, I don't think he's here, and, that was years ago. Anyway.
My recollection is, the principal purpose of the commission is to help sort of coordinate education transition for military families as they're moving locations. But, okay. Seeing no other discussion, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of adopting the motion as stated, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand?
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand? Are there any abstentions? It appears that the motion has carried unanimously, and indeed, the motion has carried unanimously, and you have appointed, you've made the appointment to the Children's Com, Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission. Okay, we are running ahead of schedule. So that now brings us to Item H, which is the Addison County SU configuration. So I'll start by providing a little bit of background. Actually, I'm going to hold off because I know that there are, I, we've clearly indicated that this subject's going to come up at 2:00, and I want to ensure that those who wish to testify have the benefit of hearing all of the testimony. So unless there are objections from the board, I'd like to hold off on that so that we can ensure that folks don't miss that opportunity, and we can take up some other items of business in its place. Does that, is that agreeable with the board? So let's move on to Item I, which is, we have a pending tuition appeal from Mr. James Jones, who is a, has a student in the Teconic and Green School District within the Bennington Rutland Supervisory Union, Supervisory Union. Jennifer Samuelson has acted as the board's hearing officer in a prior tuition case, and, but in this case, I should point out that both Ms. Samuelson and myself reside within the Bennington Rutland Supervisory Union, and more specifically, I reside within the Teconic and Green School District, and I am the moderator of the Teconic and Green School District. So I just want to disclose that there's a conflict there, so I am going to recuse myself from any discussion on this particular tuition appeal. And for similar reasons, Ms. Samuelson would not feel it appropriate to serve as the hearing officer, since she is the chair of a school district within the same Supervisory Union. We have reached out to the Attorney General's Office and, for assistance, and what we are proposing to do here is to contract for outside legal counsel to, for somebody to act as the hearing officer on behalf of the board for this particular matter, but also will have the opportunity to utilize that attorney for any future tuition appeals where Ms. Samuelson may have a conflict. So that's a little bit of the background. You'll see in your agenda packet, there's a, an RFP that the Attorney General's Office developed. There's a, we obviously have to go through a formal bid process, so the request today is to authorize the Attorney General's Office to put this out for bid, and to empower the Chair of the Board to, to contract with the winning bidder to move this particular appeal forward, as well as any future appeals. So if I, we'll get a motion on the table, and then we can have discussion or questions if there are any. So if I could have a motion, please?
Sure. I move that the State Board of Education follow the simplified bidding process in accordance with Bulletin Number 35 for an anticipated contract for legal and hearing officer services with the statement of work as described in the simplified request for proposals in Agenda Item I.
Now, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Jepson. Is there any discussion?
Would appear that there are limitations on the number of hours that that person would expect to work, so I assume that's a budgetary?
Correct.
Piece?
Yep. We would certainly have the opportunity to, with a change order, to extend if necessary, but we certainly wanted to keep this within our rather meager budget. Yes?
Oliver, in a different hat, in the pension investment commission, we just went through this process, and that commission heard, took in the proposals, and then the full commission took interviews from the two finalists, and went into executive session to make that decision. Do we anticipate a similar process? And it was a simplified bid process. It was exactly the same thing.
I think the feeling here is that this should be fairly routine business, and the, since we only meet as a board once a month, we would be prolonging the hearing process. So by authorizing the Chair to, in consultation with the AG's office to make that selection, it allows us to expedite the process. So it's certainly a possibility, but I, I think the concern is that we're delaying, we're delaying someone's appeal.
I think I saw that the, the RFP has a deadline of submission for October 12. So if those are not to be submitted to October 12, and we meet the following week, I would request that we have an opportunity to hear from finalists, if that's, like, it certainly if it can be whittled down or otherwise. I think the scope of work spoke to more than just the appeals, and I think we may have other work coming up that will benefit from independent legal opinion. So if that is rolled into, which is what it read like to me on the RFP?
The scope of work is actually just limited to tuition appeals.
Okay, because I thought it read to be for rules and a few other areas of need, and I must have misunderstood, but I was pretty sure that was in the scope of the work.
No. No, it's limited to tuition appeals. So if there are questions that arise from the tuition appeals, then that's sort of within the scope, but these, this is very much limited to the tuition appeals.
Just the tuition appeals.
So where this came, so it's, just to clarify, so it's to act as the hearing officer, but also to provide advice to the board in connection with that particular hearing? And that's been, that was a problem in the past, where we had a circumstance where we had contracted with an attorney who acted as a hearing officer, but then was unwilling and felt uncomfortable to provide advice to us because it wasn't within the scope of the work. So that's why we're very intentional about specifying, you're, you're going to act as the hearing officer, but you also need to be prepared to answer and provide advice to the board.
And that's where the reference was to the rules?
Correct.
And other legislative?
Exactly.
So where we are working on rules elsewhere, we may need a separate simplified process or something to seek independent legal opinion where that's necessary or appropriate.
We would, we would seek that opinion from the Attorney General's Office, and if they felt uncomfortable, then we go through the process. So the state procurement rules require that legal services, request for legal advice, go to the AG's office, and if they, if there's a capacity issue or conflict issue, then, then they, they approve sending it out for bid.
And, and the conflict in the appeals process is, they can't render those opinions or that service for us?
I can't speak for the Attorney General's Office. I, I don't know if it's a conflict issue or a, a capacity issue, but they're, they're unwilling to act as the hearing officer.
Okay.
Unwilling or unable, I don't know which is the case. Do I have that right, Jennifer?
As far as?
Yeah.
And I guess in general, I would say if we're going to not have the bids have a deadline until the week before we meet, I'm not sure why we wouldn't, in the process of the board meeting the following week, at least hear from the finalists, even if there's only one or were something, and I'm not saying that that one or were something, and I'm not saying that that delays it that much further.
Do you know, Oliver, with our prior, I mean, since I've been on the board, we've had two prior hearing officers. Do you know what the process for selection was for those two people?
Yeah, I don't ever even remember seeing there be a simplified bid process. So this, this is very familiar, simply because literally yesterday, I led a meeting for VPIC that we did just exactly this process to, to hire legal counsel for that commission, and never before in our procurement of hearing officers for, for any of our stuff have I seen there to be a bid process, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there, I can't remember, to be honest.
I know, we, we did a lot of that work with the Attorney General on some of the other issues coming out of Act 46, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I was thinking about the appeals where we were a defendant, too.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know how we got those legal services, maybe John would know, or what the process was for that.
I, I think it was.
They arrived at us.
I think, I, I think that, I think that, my recollection is that the Chair worked directly with the Attorney General's Office on those. But I take your point about the date, that hadn't occurred to me, that, that date, for some reason, I thought, so. It's, it's board's pleasure, any thoughts on whether you want to review the bids and make the selection as a board?
I'm comfortable with the Chair doing that, if that's the past practice.
Chair, I'll send this to Chairman Colby.
Tammy, yes.
And once we say, in fact, we are going to have a sort of public conversation on this, know that the process, we cannot assure confidentiality of a proposal, but we should know in there that, in fact, we are going to review this as a part of the board in the public session, we should know.
I didn't, I, I couldn't understand what your question was, Tammy. I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I apologize.
No worries.
What I said was that we assure confidentiality in the bid documents.
Yes.
If, in fact, we're going to have a public hearing about that, we should probably make an appearance.
Yep.
If it's at all helpful for process, and either way, I think the finalists just did, at least in yesterday, when the process of this other state board went through the same process, they had 15 minutes, the finalists, just to talk about themselves. There was no information shared regarding their fee structure. The conversation that the board had after was in executive session.
Yes, yeah.
And then the action to contract with somebody came after. So that was the way that one worked. Oh, Tammy, I'm so sorry.
So, yeah, so that, just to be clear, if the board wants to make this, a board decision, that, that's a discussion that would happen in executive session at that October meeting. Patrick?
Yes, sir. I think in terms of, in the interest of time, I trust your good judgment to make the decision, but also suggest that in a timely manner, you share the CV of the candidate or candidates with the board.
Good idea. Other thoughts? Okay, I'll, I'll just do a straw poll to see where we go with this. Remind everybody, we do have a motion on, on the table, but I'll just do a quick informal straw poll. Board members, if I could just see a show of hands for preference to have the board be part of that bid review process, please raise your hand if you'd like to proceed with that.
Have the board be part of it.
Have the board, yeah, versus delegating to the Chair. Okay. And a show of hands, those who would prefer to delegate that to the Chair, a show of hands? Any other discussion on the motion before us now? Yes, if you wouldn't mind, yeah.
I move that the State Board of Education follow the simplified bidding process in accordance with Bulletin Number 35 for an anticipated contract for legal and hearing officer services with the statement of work as described in the simplified request for proposals in Agenda Item I.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of adopting the motion as stated, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Those, no, those no, please signify by saying no and raising your hand.
Yes, sorry.
Abstentions? Okay, the vote is not unanimous, so we do need, need to take a roll call vote. So Maureen, if you would be so kind as to call the roll.
And may I just, for a second? So there are two motions, this is just the first motion. The second motion is the motion that delegates that power to the Chair, so I don't know if that changes your vote, but I just want to put that out. You can do whatever.
Can you reread the vote then, the approval, is it just the approval of the?
The simplified bidding process.
To put it out to bid, and then there's a subsequent motion that delegates to the Chair.
That's okay.
Yes, I would like to put it out to the simplified bid, so it's unanimous, the first vote.
Okay. So, so quick correction there on, on the vote. So it appears that the vote is unanimous to put this out under the simplified bid process. I'm not seeing any objections. So you have adopted that motion unanimously. So the second motion now, please.
Second motion. Okay. I move that the State Board of Education grant the State Board Chair the power to receive proposals from potential vendors in response to the simplified request for proposals, review those proposals, select a vendor, and enter into a contract with the vendor on behalf of the State Board of Education.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Jepson. Is there any discussion?
I'll just sort of reiterate that I think, given the timing that we're discussing, just as a matter of process, I think we may have other occasions we need such work, and I think it might be beneficial to have input from the board where time is not constrained. And in this case, that one week doesn't feel constraining to me.
Just a question for Kim. And are you thinking that in the presentation of the candidates or the finalists, that there would be a Q and A where you would test their, their credentials or their expertise in different areas?
The, the way it happened, again, yesterday, was two finalists for external legal services to the Vermont Pension Investment Commission Board, and there had been more candidates than that. It was looked at by the Finance Committee. They offered two finalists. Those two finalists came 10 minutes to present who they were and their credentials, and to sort of address no conflicts, you know, some of the targeted areas that are addressed in the simplified RFP, and then we had five minutes to ask questions. And then we could discuss in executive session the fit for the candidate with the purpose at hand for what that, the VPIC needed for the coming timeframe. So that was, that was how it worked for us, and it was honestly my first time in, in having that experience, because we haven't done, we haven't been aware of what this was before. So it's just coincidental that I have, that was a very positive process. It allowed us to really talk after about where we thought the fit was, and both that came before us were qualified in terms of the conditions that were sought in the RFP, and had been whittled out of a bigger pool by the Finance Committee in that case. So it didn't take a lot of extra time, and it seemed to have made sense. I am anticipating we may see more appeals than we have historically, and consequently, it might be beneficial to have a comfort with an ongoing relationship, which it sounds like we're establishing, or trying to establish. That's sort of where I come from on that. And again, the timing is only a week off, so that makes a difference for me in this case.
Board members, any other questions, comments? Yes, Jenna?
So if it's multiple, could be engaged for multiple appeals, if there's a conflict of interest with another appeal that's forthcoming, then does a bid process start over again to retain another lawyer, attorney?
Good question.
Again, our state is this big.
Yes, yes. Unfortunately, I think the answer is probably yes.
And the only thing, and this is all like in the land of speculation, but I, I do believe that these bids are going out to law firms.
That was my follow-up question, right.
So if there were, you know, a primary person who were conflicted, I think they could be screened and potentially someone else from.
Within the firm.
Yeah, I mean, and that's total speculation, but.
So should language around that be specified in this bid? I, I'm just curious around process.
Yeah, or certainly, that's a good question to ask of any potential candidate. Because you're right, it is big.
Good question. Other questions, comments? Okay. All righty.
Just another question. I note on the agenda later, there's election of Chair, Vice Chair. This will be the newly elected Chair.
Correct, yes. So it's not by name, it's whomever is the Chair at the time, so. Okay. All righty, hearing no other discussion, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of adopting, well, I think it's, we'll, we'll do a roll call on this, so Maureen, if, if you could be so kind as to call the roll.
Tammy Colby? Jenna O'Farrell?
Yes.
Tom Lovett?
Yes.
Patrick Brown?
Yes.
Kimberly Gleason?
No.
Gabrielle Lucci?
Yes.
Lyle Jepson?
Yes.
Jennifer Samuelson?
Yes.
The Chair voting?
No, not voting.
Chair Allison?
Yes.
I do think that Kim brings up an excellent point, though, that we might be anticipating more appeals such as this, given some recent decisions and pending decisions. I'm wondering whether we need to think about or be proactive in thinking about establishing a relationship with a firm in a more broader kind of an RFP, that then the board would have sort of a conversation around where we have one or more candidates then come in. I can see the, the point of being, of expediting for this one case, but I do, I do think Kim brings up a really good point, which is, we might anticipate seeing more of these in the future, and perhaps setting up a contracting vehicle or an arrangement or relationship with a firm, a priority, so that we don't have to go through this conversation every single time, might be helpful, and that the board, the board could be part of that vetting process in a, in a more general way.
This RFP is not specific to this appeal. It provides that as a vehicle, so if there are further appeals, they can fall within this contracting vehicle. The only constraint is on the, the, the number of hours due to budgetary concerns, but that can be extended through a change order. So I do want to make sure, Maureen, if you could, I think we've completed the roll call, if you could announce the results?
Seven one.
Okay. The motion carries seven one. Absent objection from the board, I think we'll move on to item K, which is an update on the EQS Rule Update Committee.
Tammy, should I take that in the interest of your voice?
I'm going to just, for a minute, can't tell me anything, but I will give my thoughts in fact, and hard to do.
Thanks, Tammy. Our committee has been meeting. We have resolved our questions around some modifications to the definitions section, and we have moved on to the instructional practices section, and heard from the Vermont NEA and Dr. Andrew Jones from the Curriculum Coordinators Association, and, and heard largely support of the work, the recognition of the professional development that'll be necessary to implement these changes with efficacy, and the clarity and appreciation by those two professionals for the balance between specificity and adaptability in the way those rules were written. We are recognizing we would look to hear from some school board representation with some regional diversity around the state, from superintendent, similarly, representation with some diversity from regional areas around the state. And I, also students, and VASARN, the Vermont Students Anti-Racism Network, is one group which we will reach out to, and we'd also like to hear from some representation from the CTEs around the state. So we have some work ahead of us. We have been on an every-two-week schedule, and I think we are looking for a, a day next week, and then expecting that by the, I'm going to say, hopefully by the end of October, we will get to have a public hearing to be held in the evening to hear people sharing their thoughts with us regarding the draft as it will be at that point, so that we could incorporate that and bring it back to our board for November, hopefully, take back your feedback, and then December, January, get ourselves on schedule with the district quality standards work to have all of that move into process, hopefully, in February. So team, did I miss anything? Does that sound about right? Okay, any questions from the board?
Hi, this is Patrick. So, Mr. Chair and members of the board, the State Board of Education, as a committee member, I just want to inform you that Ms. Gleason and Ms. Colby are leading this charge very, very well-equipped and very qualified, and I'm so happy to be a part of this committee. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Patrick. I think we've got folks really putting good thought to this work, and there was so much work that came before these proposed rules came to us, and then we're incredibly grateful for the representation that went through the Act One rule process as well, so, but thanks, Patrick.
Thank you. Other comments or questions for the committee? Thank you for, for that update. So that concludes item K. I think, Mr. Secretary, if you wouldn't mind providing an update on item L, the district quality standards outline?
Sure. There's a memo to you for me in your packet on this, and this is a, I think, an action item. It's an update on district quality standards, which is newly passed in law, but there is a requirement that the State Board adopt a written plan for the agency to follow around engagement with stakeholders as we move forward in this process. As you know, I think this will be the first time the agency proceeds with rulemaking on its own, and these are new body of rules. So what I wanted to do, based on our earlier conversation, was firstly, in this memo, to provide you sort of some context and provide you a summary of what that process might entail. I think there's two major components. One, are defining the new rules, what we'll call the district quality standards themselves. The statute lays out that these rules will have three basic topics, business operations, facilities management, and I forgot, lost the other one there, I may, and governance. facilities management, and I forgot, lost the other one there, I may, and governance. And the one change, based on our internal deliberations, we're deciding to expand facilities management to also include the topic of facility safety. We thought that was important to call out. So we've done this sort of initial framing of this work, sort of outlined for your review. And then the last part of the memo, on the backside of my packet, describes a tentative timeline of how we see that going forward. Basically, again, in September, sort of understanding what's the scope, what's involved. As I mentioned, the one, one tweak we've made from the statutory language is to expand the idea of facilities management to include facility safety. In October, we'd move forward with the actual rule development with various education stakeholder groups. We have, as, as mentioned in the recommended engagement plan, that's already kind of moved forward on the, the governance standards. We've reached out with the School Boards Association. But anyway, through October, defining the rules, and these are new rules, and then as we move into November, bringing forward the work from the School Boards Association and others on governance, and bringing this together into a coherent, complete model, also at that time including the quality assurance rules. So by the end of November, we should have at least a first draft of the entire new rule piece. December, doing more stakeholder engagement refinement, trying to achieve a stable draft by the end of December, and then going through a formal public comment period in the month of January and presenting ultimately a stable draft to the Interagency Committee on Administrative Rules. So that's designed to give you a sense of the scope of the work and what's involved. And the last part of this, then, is what would be a recommended engagement plan. This is also a new experience for the board, so I took the liberty of sort of outlining what I would recommend to you as an engagement plan for the agency to follow. Again, the month of October, this is where we're working on the basic definition of the rules. The agency would be working with the relevant content experts on these rules. So for example, business operations, we'd be working a lot with school, school business officials, the superintendents and so forth, who have technical understanding of those rules. Likewise, facilities management, we'd be reaching out to facilities managers and so forth. We also, in terms of safety, have interest in our expertise inside the state government, Department of Public Safety, and so forth. So in October, we'd be doing engagement with those various groups. Specific call-out in October on the governance standards, again, have worked in partnership with VSBA, School Board Association, to move forward with the original, or the initial work in that area, and the Superintendent Association has expressed interest in also being involved. So that would be the month of October. Month of November, we'd work with various stakeholder groups to refine and develop the rules. We'd also solicit, solicit formal written comment on the rules from the, the key associations that are involved with the implementation of the content of the rules, namely the School Boards Association, Superintendent Association, the Principal Association, and Vermont NEA. And we do that prior to Thanksgiving. And then in December, the agency will solicit public feedback on the rules through a formal comment period, and provide written rationale for either incorporating, modifying, or rejecting the feedback. We'd also start to do, which I think will be important, because again, this has to be brought forward to a certain extent as a result of a legislative charge, is we want to do some socialization with this work with newly elected and any of the legislative leaders that are interested in doing that in the month of December. And then going into January, the agency would present evidence of compliance with the board's plan at its meeting in January. Similarly, at the January meeting, we'd also present a final version of the rules. The purpose of that presentation would be for your information, not for an up or down vote on the part of the board. And then we would file the proposed rule with the ICAR in advance of the February 1 deadline, and that should be 2023, not 2022, in the memo. So happy to answer any questions on that. It's sort of an update on how we see the work shaping up, but then a specific action item on the, the board moving forward on recommending an engagement plan for the agency. And if you can't do that today, we certainly, I think it would be useful to do it at the next meeting, so we would have that settled.
Dr. Colby?
I'm speaking to this. I'm wondering, as I look through this list of engagement exercises, and it's great to see exactly sort of how you're engaging and approaching the work, is I don't see an opportunity in here for the State Board to have, right? I see under item 3D, that you're going to make a presentation to the State Board for information and discussion purposes, but I don't, I'm, I'm not sure that I understand how we engage in that process, if we have feedback, and I, I just offer that, that because we have a parallel process going on with respect to the EQS being open for other things, and it would be, from my perspective, I want to make sure these two things are working together in the end. So where, where in this process do you see sort of a conversation with the State Board about sort of the substance of what it is that you're pulling together and where we might have an opportunity to come?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't anticipate that. I know we've been working with you and having those conversations. I think that's, it's a good question, as, I think particularly as we get through November and December. And honestly, I don't have a, other than the update I've received today, I don't have a firm sense of what your trajectory, your thinking is on the EQS piece. I will say, you know, it's our thinking, my thinking, that the EQS revision will provoke opening those rules in their entirety, not just the result as the Act, Act One ethnic studies ideas. So we are working internally inside the agency to identify any technical recommendations we'd like to bring forward in anticipation of the board opening those rules, the, the EQS rules. So I think we do have some work to do, I would say, around coordinating with the State Board about how to bring these two projects together. But in terms of, if your question's around the board giving input into the rules, that would be something certainly we could embellish this engagement plan on. If the board wanted to weigh in on a draft of the rules, we'd be happy to do that with you as well.
Thanks, Secretary. I certainly would love to see you draft early on and have the opportunity to comment on them, just like other stakeholder groups might.
Sure. Yeah, there, again, we, unlike the EQS, we have a firm time deadline, and I think that would probably be the December meeting. You know, looking at it honestly right now, because I think November, we have to assemble, we wouldn't have a complete draft. Well, your meeting's at the end of the month of November. That would, I think that would be aggressive for us to deliver on November, but we might be able to do that.
Just, I, I know we've had conversations about it, but it might have gotten off of some of that, is it still is the EQS subcommittee's goal of having whatever provisions that come out of that subcommittee finalized and voted on by the board by December, at the latest January, so that we stay on a parallel timeframe to the timeframe that you are on for your work, so that all of these things go to ICAR at the same time. I think it would be unfortunate to have two potential revisions to the EQS working through the process at different timelines. I think that'd be confusing, and I think it also could create problems for both of your versions.
Yeah, I would agree. I think just, again, I think we're anticipating the board opening rulemaking on EQS, that whole 2000 series rules. There are more topics in there than just the Act One issues. So I think my understanding is the subcommittee's been largely focused on that sort of subset of issues. We are also working on, just looking at the construct of the overarching set of rules, the 2000 series, so at some point, we should discuss how to bring.
We, yeah, the, the subcommittee did ask the agency for a list of other technical corrections that it might like to see, as a part of that effort, so that we could move it through with this process all at once. So perhaps we can talk about sort of a timeline for when you might be able to provide those to our committee, and we can move that through at the same time.
Makes sense.
Any other, Jennifer?
Well, I'm just wondering, would it make sense under 2B, where the agency shall solicit formal written comment on these rules from VSBA, VSA, VPA, would it make sense to include the State Board of Ed in there as well?
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's a great point. I don't, how, how you would like to do it, I think I'd leave it up to the board. I think our intention at some point in November is to be able to produce something that people could provide reaction to. Whether we'd be able to do, you have to receive that at a formal meeting, I think, so that, I don't know what date's your November meeting. Is it after Thanksgiving?
Probably before, yeah, right.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think third week in November would be pushing it for us to produce something, so I'm thinking it would be December, but we'd have to, we can work on that. I'm, you know, I'm certainly open to the idea of the board giving feedback to the rules.
So I'm, I'm going to suggest we table this for, for now and return our regularly scheduled programming, and then we can come back to this. Does that?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. Sounds like there wants to be more discussion, and I want to, I'm unconscious of the fact we have many guests with us, and I do want to try to stick to time, but we, we obviously have picked up some time, which I think is, is good, because clearly, we need to hear from quite a few folks. So I'm going to move us back to item H, which is to discuss Addison County SU configuration. Yeah, I, so we're going to be as loud as we can, but I really, anybody who is having trouble, I really would recommend taking, feel free to take any of the seats up front here. I'd like to keep us on task. So I, we have, we seem to have plenty of seating up front, so let's, let's do that.
Oliver, I also noticed Katie Ballard's in the audience.
Okay, she's going to have to.
Yeah. Look, we're on a game show. Interesting configuration.
Yeah, feel free to take any of these other chairs if, if it runs out of space. Okay. So hopefully, can you guys hear us better now? Okay. Apologies for that. So, so we're on item H, which, which is to discuss Addison County SU configuration, and I'd like to start with providing a little bit of some background context on why we're here today. We, as many of you know, we went through an exercise last year, following the Ripton withdrawal, to look at how best to address SU assignment for Ripton. So it was literally a year ago in September that we had a similar discussion with the Ripton School District, and at the time, a few different supervisory unions and, and a supervisory district. Fast forward into January, the State Board of Education designated Ripton as a supervisory district, i.e., a combined school district and supervisory union. Following that, there was significant activity in the, in the legislature culminating in Act 176, that was signed by the governor in, in May of this year. But leading up to that, the State Board heard from the folks in Lincoln, who had successfully voted to withdraw with the consent of the other member communities within that union school district. And the State Board heard from Lincoln in April and again in May, in the midst of, of legislation that was, was pending. And in fact, it was in, at our meeting in May, was after the legislature had adjourned, and Act 176 was pending, was waiting for the governor's signature. The, there was a provision that was carefully crafted, actually, there were several provisions that were carefully crafted by the legislature to address the Ripton withdrawal and also the pending Lincoln withdrawal. And those provisions included a number of things that were similar between Ripton and Lincoln, but among them, they provided the opportunity for those withdrawing communities to delay operation or transition to an independent school district. They also required those newly formed school districts to provide a status report for the State Board of Education, and require the State Board of Education to assess those status reports and provide a statement of preparedness on each of those. And depending on the outcome of that statement from the State Board, if the statement was in the negative, provided those communities with the very unique, one-time opportunity to undo the withdrawal and go back into their prior structure, which, as many of you know, is a more complicated process in, in normal times. Folks from Lincoln came to the State Board in, in May with a request to effectively get out in front of the law and conclude their withdrawal effort and, and not be, not have their community avail themselves of those provisions within Act 176, including, and importantly, the ability to delay the start of operations by a year, and number two, to provide their voters, their electorate, with the opportunity to undo that withdrawal if it was determined by the State Board that there was a risk to the success of, of, of that independent school district. So that's a little bit of, of the background we did at that time as part of our order granting the withdrawal. We indicated that we would be taking up the question of SU configuration for Lincoln at our meeting in September. And between May and September, we started having conversations as a board, sort of discussing the various issues in Addison County. There were discussions between the Lincoln School Board and the Ripton School Board about coming together and, and creating a new supervisory union. So those discussions were ongoing for some time, and we've now arrived at, at our meeting today to, to hear from folks about some of the possibilities. We, in July, heard from the Lincoln School District that they had a desire to form a joint supervisory union with the Ripton School District. And then on September 1st, we received correspondence from Lincoln School Board indicating that they were, would be seeking assignment to a supervisory union. They've indicated that the White River Valley Supervisory Union is their preference. They also identified several other supervisory unions and two supervisory districts that were also possible options. So I have, I, I asked all of those identified supervisory unions and supervisory districts to provide comment, which is, has been posted on the State Board's website, and I have also invited all interested parties, namely the Lincoln School District and the supervisory unions and supervisory districts identified to come before the State Board today and to offer testimony and provide an opportunity for the State Board to ask questions. As I think we, we go through this discussion, clearly, a lot has changed since our, our meeting in May. In our meeting in May, representations were made that the Lincoln School District was planning to form a joint supervisory union with, with Ripton, and that they would not be seeking unilateral assignment into a supervisory union. That has, has clearly changed. We have new information as of September 1st, so 28 days ago. The other thing I want to take note of is that, you know, there's been some confusion. I've heard it reported that the State Board made a decision with respect to the Ripton status report. The, the State Board did not make a decision. We issued a preparedness statement, and that was a statement about the Ripton School District. So I just want to be very clear on that point. And there are a number of options on the table, and it's a little bit complicated because we don't have all the information at this point. For example, Ripton will be voting tomorrow about whether they wish to return to the Addison Central Supervisory District, or whether they want to remain an independent school district. So that will have some bearing, I would suggest, on, on these discussions. So I think it is, you know, it's, it's going to be a board discussion throughout this, but I, I think it is, I would suggest highly unlikely that we season. So I just want to acknowledge that this is less than ideal. We are in a less than ideal situation, and I want to acknowledge that we're doing the best that we can with what we have to work with. Our toolbox is, is fairly scarce. We don't have a lot of options. We're working with the tools that we have to work with, and we'll do the best. But unfortunately, as I think has become quite clear to everyone, our options, we have no good options, and whatever decision we end up making, someone or some people will not be happy with the State Board. I, I think that is very clear. Our hope was that, you know, there would be a, a, a perfect marriage out there, and we would be making a decision today that made everybody happy, but until that surfaces, we're going to need some time to, to work through this and come to a, a good, the best decision, I should say, that we can out of some rather undesirable options. So with that said, order of the business, we're going to, we're going to start with and hear a presentation from the Lincoln School District, then we'll proceed to the White River Supervisory Union, then the Orleans Central Supervisory Union, then the Montpelier-Roxbury Supervisory District, the Grand Isle Supervisory Union, the Lemoyle South Supervisory Union, the Rutland Northeast Supervisory Union, the Central Vermont Supervisory Union, the, the Orange East Supervisory Union may not be with us today. Their superintendent had a death in the family just this past weekend and may not be able, he will not be here. I don't know if anyone else from there is, is with us. The Addison Northwest Supervisory District, the Mount Abrahams Union Supervisory District, and then we'll provide Lincoln with an opportunity again, and then we'll have some board discussion. So that's the general order of the business. I did, in all of the, the course, the comments we received from supervisory unions and supervisory districts was posted to the website, as well as Lincoln's correspondence, and a memo from, from legal counsel, Owen McLean, who previously, and I, I don't, is unclear to me, had represent, I don't know if he still does, but represented a, an advocacy group in Lincoln, the Save Our Schools Group. In that correspondence from Mr. McLean, there is a, a statement there that does need to be corrected as a matter of correcting the record. There was a, a statement that was attributed to me that I had called the Lincoln withdrawal reckless. That is a pretty significant misrepresentation of what I said, and I want to be very clear. I did not say that the Lincoln withdrawal was reckless. What I said was reckless, and I would add irresponsible, was the move back in May to circumvent the will of the General Assembly to get out in front of Act 176 and effectively prevent the district from delaying operations to provide it more time.
The Middle School Field Hockey Day is canceled today. Middle School Field Hockey Day is canceled and there is no practice.
And removed the ability for the district to delay assuming, the assumption of operations and to disenfranchise the electorate in Lincoln from having the ability to reconsider their withdrawal if the State Board issued a determination of unpreparedness. So I just want to be very clear that my statement referred to Mr. McLean's memo is, is grossly inaccurate. So with that, who from Lincoln is with us today?
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself for the record.
Absolutely, yeah. Good afternoon. It's nice to see everybody in person. My name is Jen Oldham, and I am the Chair of the Lincoln School District Board, and I am here to provide testimony on behalf of Lincoln today. I also have next to me Hannah Waite from Sheehe, Furlong and Beam, and, Beam, sorry. And as well, Owen McLean is behind us, who were involved in preparing the legal memo that was included with our September 1, 2022 letter to the SBE. Hannah is here to answer further questions from the SBE about that memo, if there are any. Also on the phone is Ron Shems, additional legal counsel who represented Lincoln during our May meeting and who's from also is supporting our efforts related to our financial exit agreement from MUSD.
Before we go any further, I want to be really clear about the legal counsel and their relationship and whom they're representing, because this has been a little bit muddy.
Yeah, I apologize for my quickly worded email in response to your question. Both Ron Shems and Hannah and, and Owen are representing the Lincoln School Board.
School district, right.
School district, sorry.
Yes, okay. And, and not the town and not Save Our Schools.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I just also want to acknowledge my fellow board members who are here in attendance, Jeannie Albert, Rob Backland, and Mary Demagnani. And we are missing one who's working, Abby Reynolds. So first, I want to thank the SBE for the opportunity to provide our perspective on assignment of Lincoln to a supervisory union under Section 261. We acknowledge the SBE has been considering and continues to have things to consider with respect to supervisory services in Addison County, and we also appreciate the many perspectives that were provided and shared with the SBE from the letters that you solicited from different supervisory unions. I'd like to start my remarks by just referencing what is essentially at the heart of Section 261, which is that all Vermont schools and students deserve and require access to the services that supervisory unions have been charged to provide. These include development of curriculum, facilitating the receipt and distribution of federal and state funds, professional development for teachers, administrators, and staff, special education services, management services for financial and student data, including grant writing and fundraising, the negotiation, the negotiation of contracts with teachers and administrators, transportation and food service for students, and annual financial reporting. These services are critical to ensuring Vermont schools are able to provide high-quality education to all students, and we hope the focus and end result of this afternoon's discussion will be a determination on the best way for the Lincoln School District and its students to receive these services. On May 18th, 2022, this board approved Lincoln's unconditional withdrawal from the Mount Abe Unified School District and notified interested parties it would review supervisory union boundaries on its own initiative. Lincoln's deadline is to be fully operational, is, is to be a fully operational school district by July 1, 2023, and in May, the SBA notified parties it would decide how to assign Lincoln to receive these services at its September meeting. And I apologize for being redundant for what you've already explained. We urge the board to make a determination today so the steps necessary to ensure the availability of these services can get underway as soon as possible. At the same time, I also want to express the full commitment of the Lincoln School District to support the success of an assignment made by the SBE to achieve this goal. I think because it's been raised, it's also important to note that the Lincoln School District is not in the same situation as the Lincoln, as the Ripton School District was, because we did receive unconditional withdrawal approval from MUSD and because our school is actually a larger, more stable, and arguably financially sound school. So I, I bring that up just so that there's, when comparisons are made, there's some framework for comparison. In the SBE's consideration of Addison County SU assignment, we are here to respectfully request that Lincoln be assigned to an existing multi-district supervisory union. Again, we thank all the supervisory unions that responded to the SBE's request for information about their ability and willingness to potentially absorb Lincoln as a member district. We acknowledge the responses ranged, expressed a range of concerns and challenges that could come with adding the district to their SU, and we understand and respect these concerns. At the same time, we are acutely aware that the options going forward are very limited and that assigning the Lincoln School District to an existing multi-district supervisory union is, in fact, one of the most viable options available to the SBE to ensure all students have access to the essential services provided by an SU, that efficiencies are recognized, and that adequate supervision is provided to the district. As such, we have specifically reviewed comments from two supervisory unions that we believe share Lincoln's educational values and philosophies, as well as our commitment to the success of small community schools. These are the White River Valley SU and the Central Vermont SU. And I do tangentially want to respond to the comment from the board, from the board chair from Rochester, that Lincoln did, in fact, reach out to the White River Valley SU. We had very good conversation with Jamie Canarni. He was supportive of our efforts, but was very clear that the SU had heavily considered Ripton's response and had made a determination based on a number of factors that it was not something they were interested in doing, and therefore, it was not brought to the attention, my understanding it was not brought to the attention of the board at that time. And subsequently, I did reach out to Jamie to ask if we could still potentially meet with the board, and he was out of town, and that did not happen, but I, I just want to assure that relationships are important to us, and being able to talk to board members would have always been our ideal, but those opportunities did not present themselves. Based on available information, it is clear both of these SUs are led by super, experienced superintendents skilled at managing multi-district SUs with schools of varying sizes, including small schools like the Lincoln Community School. And both supervisory unions and their boards have successfully navigated the challenges represented by Act 46, as well as challenges inherent to any SU. We want to emphasize our deep respect for the board, superintendents, and hard-working members of these supervisory unions and other supervisory unions around the state. Our goal is not to throw anyone under the bus, but we want to ensure that any, and we want to ensure that any SU we may be assigned to knows that Lincoln is fully committed to mitigating potential challenges, cultivating relationships, and actively working to demonstrate its value as a member of the SU. One of the concerns expressed in these letters was about how Link, adding Lincoln could affect the efficiencies that they have developed within their SU. And the only thing that I can add is that, time and again, the fact that Lincoln might be its own individual small school district and the inefficiencies surrounding that, around that have been raised over and over. So when we talk about efficiencies, there's efficiencies, both as it relates to Lincoln and as it relates to other SUs. In terms of geographic challenges, the Lincoln School District and LCS staff are committed to traveling necessary distance to ensure face-to-face participation, to build trust and productive relationships, and as we have all learned, technology enables, enables engagement, communication, and supervision from a distance. In instances where SUs reference geography as a challenge to providing services, Lincoln has experience in and is prepared to assume responsibility for SU services that may be more efficiently managed at the district level, be it transportation, food service, technology, elements of education, of special education, and others. Financially, the Lincoln School District is in a strong position, and our financial modeling continues to show we will be a net positive contributor to the operations of a supervisory union with the ability to lower cost per pupil, increase central office capacity, and/or free up funds to support educational programs. It is also worth noting that although Lincoln did not receive state funding to facilitate its transition to a district and new supervisory union, we are successfully raising private funds to do so and are able to support transition costs. The Lincoln Community School is a well-run, highly-regarded K-6 school with stable staffing, an experienced, creative, and resourceful principal who has been at the school for 30 years with a focus on the highest quality of leadership, educational opportunities, and a financial efficiency. It is not a school that will burden a superintendent's time. The Lincoln Community School also enjoys overwhelming community support. The school, its students, and their successes are pillars of what makes Lincoln a community, and the community is an active participant in the education that takes place in the Again, Lincoln fully acknowledges and respects the concerns presented by the SUs and does not question that bringing a new district into an SU will require additional work in the short term. At the same time, we believe there are a number of means by which to mitigate many of these challenges, and that working in partnership and carrying out a more detailed and factual assessment of the possibilities will build relationships, identify these means, as well as shed more light on the benefits of adding the Lincoln School District to the supervisory union. As an alternative to assigning Lincoln to an existing supervisory union, creating a new supervisory union comprised of the Lincoln School District and the Mount Abe School District would equally provide a means for Lincoln to receive supervisory union services. We recognize that it would be deconstructing one of the preferred education governance models of the Agency of Education. We recognize that both Lincoln and MUSD have expressed strong reservations about this solution, and we recognize that the pending vote to merge MAUSD and Addison Northwest Supervisory District adds additional uncertainty to the viability of this solution. Nonetheless, as it currently stands, synergies and efficiencies already exist between the Lincoln School District and the Mount Abe Unified School District, such that many of the challenges expressed by other SUs would not come into play. Specifically, the Lincoln Community School is currently receiving SU services as part of MUSD, and continuing to receive these services as a separate district would arguably be a relatively smooth transition. Lincoln's students and programs are already part of MAUSD data and information systems, alignment of teacher contracts already exists, and Lincoln is part of the five-town community that originally comprised the Mount Abe School District and is part of the culture and fabric of that community. It is therefore equally reasonable to consider deconstruction of Mount Abe Unified School District into an SU as a viable means to provide supervisory union services to the Lincoln School District. I want to finally address the potential of assigning Lincoln as its own supervisory district. We have considered this option extensively over the last year and want to be clear in our conclusion that assigning Lincoln as its own supervisory district creates unacceptable risk to ensuring adequate provision of critical supervisory union services articulated in Section 261. There are several facts that support this conclusion. First, without the possibility of working with another school to create a new supervisory union, Lincoln is unable to solely bear the cost, workload, and risk of operationalizing all of the functions of a supervisory union. Second, expert testimony provided during the Ripton hearings and summarized in the SBE response to Ripton's report on preparedness highlighted significant challenges to the success of a small, single-school supervisory district, including the need for SU administrators with the, with combinations of highly specialized qualifications and licensures, the financial risk of unexpected addition of high-needs special ed... all of the functions of a supervisory union. Second, expert testimony provided during the Ripken hearings and summarized in the SBE response to Ripken's report on preparedness highlighted significant challenges to the success of a small, single-school supervisory district, including the need for SU administrators with combinations of highly-specialized qualifications and licensures, the financial risk of unexpected addition of high-needs special ed student, and regulatory requirements that may require more staff than are available. Third, it would require significant collaboration and cooperation with MAUSD to ensure responsible transfer of necessary systems, data, contracts, resources to new staff and newly-created systems in the Lincoln School District. This will place a significant burden on MAUSD, and there is uncertainty about its ability to engage at that level in a timely way, especially if a merger goes through. And finally, while not quantified in Section 261, opinions expressed by both the State Board of Education and AOE indicate Lincoln would not be large enough as its own supervisory district support the planning and administrative functions of a supervisory union. For these reasons, designating Lincoln as its own supervisory district will not ensure Lincoln students have access to important services, and therefore, assignment to an existing multi-district SU or an SU with MAUSD are the only viable options before us. In closing, we again urge the board to make a determination today, so the steps necessary to ensure successful access to these services can begin as soon as possible. Thank you for your time, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Oldham. In your discussion of the various options, you did not include any discussion about the proposal to create a joint supervisory union with Ripken, and less than two months ago, we received correspondence from the Lincoln School District indicating your unqualified support of that, so I want to be really clear, because Ripken has not voted yet. If Ripken votes not to return to ACSD, is that still the plan that, is your preferred plan to create a joint SU with Ripken?
I believe we need to move forward with the options that we have presented here, because there are too many unknowns in many of these factors, and the longer that time goes on, the more challenging it will be.
But we'll know, you didn't answer the question directly, we'll know tomorrow, 7:00 tomorrow, what the status is of Ripken. So if Ripken votes not to return to ACSD, can you give us a clear yes or no, do you support forming a shared supervisory union with Ripken as you had indicated you would do in May, and reiterated with unqualified support less than two months ago?
Again, I, things have evolved since that time.
Yes or no, binary?
Well, I'll be, I'll be honest, we have not considered that possibility, so it is something we would have to go back and discuss with Ripken.
Okay. Board members, questions?
I've spent some time reviewing 16 VSA Section 261A, and I thought the letter that Mr. McLean wrote, that sort of provided his understanding of the legal framework, didn't quite accord with the statutory framework that's provided in 261 Subparagraph A. And as I'm looking at, the State Board shall review, which is mandatory, but it may regroup, which is permissive, the supervisory unions of the state, or create new supervisory unions in such a manner as to afford increased efficiency or greater convenience and economy. And I've been looking in all of the written documentation that we provided for anything that would support that standard, and I haven't seen it, and I'm trying to understand, I can, I can understand from Lincoln's perspective that it would be more efficient to be put with a supervisory union or to deconstruct a supervisory district into an SU, but I haven't seen any evidence to support any idea of increased efficiency or greater convenience in economy to that entity that the State Board might create. So I'm really looking for evidence to support that, and I'm sensitive to the fact that many of these supervisory unions mentioned collective bargaining agreements, the fact that, you know, salaries are not consistent from, you know, one school district to the next, the risk that bringing in Lincoln would cause their tax rates to go up. I'm really concerned, you know, I don't see any evidence, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we were to put you with White River, or if we were to deconstruct Mount Abe, what does that do to their tax rate, and how can we be assured that there's increased efficiency and greater convenience and economy to that model as a whole? I just, I don't see that information, I don't feel like we have that information to be able to make an informed decision today.
The goal that we are focused on is ensuring that, as Section 261 states, all students have access to supervisory, the services provided by a supervisory union. And efficiencies, I believe efficiencies in this case need to be considered relative to that goal. And I do know for certain that there has not been any in-depth analysis with any of these supervisory unions, because we've had not, we've not had the opportunity to discuss things in depth, and I, again, completely understand their concerns, but again, there are concerns that haven't been tested, and with Lincoln, that we haven't been able to brainstorm ways to mitigate them, they aren't familiar with our budget yet, and again, I don't want to dismiss any of these concerns, but I believe our priority is first to ensure the availability of supervisory union services to the Lincoln School District, and then to determine what is the most efficient way to do that.
If you haven't had the time to have these conversations with these supervisory unions, it feels really irresponsible for us to be expected to make a decision without this necessary information.
The, the only thing I can offer in that regard is encouraging supervisory unions to talk to us about it more in depth.
Within the next two hours, you're asking us to make a decision today, but you're saying you need more time.
Well, if you need more time, we can take more time.
Well, and I'm hearing you say that you need more time because you haven't had these conversations.
We haven't had conversations to enable us to assuage the concerns of supervisory unions, and they have not had the time, and what I hear you saying is, therefore, you don't have the time because you don't have the complete information, and I understand that. But in all the other mergers that have taken place under Act 46, supervisory unions were provided with financial incentives to enter into engagement and conversations among the districts that were being merged. No supervisory union now has any such incentive to do so, and so understandably, they have listed the reasons why they, they aren't interested, and so we will not have access to them unless there is some sort of encouragement by, I believe, unless there is some sort of encouragement by the State Board of Education to allow those conversations to take place. We have not been able, because of the circumstances, to open those doors.
Let me just, one more thing. So as you sit here, like, you couldn't tell us if we put you with White River or with Mount Abe, you can't tell us what would happen to their tax rate?
Lincoln is a financially viable school, we have run models that have, that allow for a variety of different SU assessments. My understanding is that our, the impact would be on our tax rate, we would, you know, we're not part of a unified district anymore, so our direct impact on their tax rate would be different than if we were part of a unified district. I am able to find more information about that if I am, if we are able to talk to these supervisory unions and districts and have access to their financial records as well, but Lincoln would be contributing to the cost of the central office, and that would allow savings to be incurred. And that's the, the nature of, of becoming part of a supervisory union, is you have more districts to share the central office expenses with. So there are some assumptions there, and again, I have more financial people who can, I don't know if we want to do it now, can come up and talk about that, and having discussions that include financial discussions with SUs would enable us to clarify that, but in my quasi-limited experience in all, in this, well, it's not that limited, I've been on the school board before, I've been on this school board, I do understand finance, that contributing money to offset central office operating expenses would be a net positive.
Quickly, before we transition to Kim, I do want to correct the record on one other statement I heard, and the statement I believe I heard was that the State Board and the AOE have somehow concluded that Link, the Lincoln School District is not of sufficient size to be a supervisory district. To the best of my knowledge, the board has made no such finding.
...............................................................
Pull on the thread, you just mentioned, Oliver, not only have we not made such a decision, the decision and the only, the only comparative we have, or precedent we have, is making Ripken their own supervisory district. The vote happening in advance of the law changing, and the forcing of that vote, leaves us only exactly the same tools we had when we made Ripken a supervisory district. And you've noted that you guys are larger than they are, so I think I'll just dispense with that because Oliver's mentioned it, and I'm drawing attention to those things you've mentioned, the timeline and the tools, based on the forced vote in May. I think the other piece that was foregone at that time was the protection of closure for school for two years, which was part of the law as well, so I'll leave that where it is. And with all due respect, you mentioned appropriately that students deserve the right to access to central office services, and then you articulate all of them, and I'm wondering what the plan was for that when you voted to remove yourselves from availing the services of the supervisory district you were part of.
Our plan was to form a supervisory union with Ripken. And our plan was not to seek assignment to a multi-district supervisory union or to seek moving back to MAUSD, and the evolution of things over the summer have led us to a new set of conclusions, using our, our best judgment about what's possible and what's best for our children. And the, the conclusion, as I've tried to express, is that we are not able to launch our own, be an independent supervisory district and assure those services are available. And we are no longer in discussions with Ripken about forming a, a new supervisory union, and so we are here to work with the State Board of Education to determine what is the best way to ensure that our students and all students have access to these services.
And I guess I will follow up to say, with all due respect, the actions taken by the self-selected folks in May prevented you from being even on a similar path with similar options to those whom you expected might be your partners in the work, so I find that difficult to reconcile, that now we are in a position to solve a challenge that may have had different options available to it before. The other, the only other thing I'll mention is something that I think is, is complicated enough that people may not completely understand, but SU assessment doesn't get voted on. So it is assessed back to your school district, as is tuitioning of your non-operating grades, become costs to a district which can then squeeze out what's available for the kids in your K-5 or pre-K-6 grade configuration. An electorate has no vote in their supervisory union assessment, and I think that's really an important recognition, that all those services that have been enjoyed through the school district configuration, of which Lincoln was a part, were part of the budget that everybody was voting on, and I think there is tremendous risk to squeezing out with SU assessment and tuitioning costs what remains for the school and the students being sought to preserve. And so those are observations and concerns.
And just to tack onto that, supervisory unions have a great deal of flexibility with how they set their assessments.
We realize that.
So that's just something to be mindful of, you know, there are a multitude of factors, you know, complexities, distance, geography, transition costs, et cetera, supervisory unions can get quite creative. So I think there are probably many other questions, but in, we will bring the folks from Lincoln back up at the end, I do want to make sure that we hear from other folks. I do, I know that the representative from Orleans Central SU had a time conflict, so I want to provide, I think it's Penny Chamberlain, the opportunity to address the board, and then we'll go to White River. So Penny, are you still with us? Yes, I see you.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, Penny. Maybe I'm the only one that feels like I'm dancing around this question, which is, is there any reason why they can't go back to where they were? Could you help me understand that, and why we're not listing that as an option?
Because the self-selected representatives of Lincoln, with advice and counsel from their attorneys, came to the State Board in May, days before the governor signed Act 176, and pressed us to make a decision and grant their withdrawal in advance of the passage of that law, in an effort to get around the law. That law would have provided them with the opportunity that Ripken now has to go back. So that is not an option that's available absent going through a more complicated merger process, and we, as a board, have no authority to force merge a school district into another. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and you've probably answered that before, so thank you.
No worries. All righty, Penny, the floor is yours.
And we submit a letter to the request from the Lincoln School District, and I just want to revisit some of our concerns with bringing a board of school, a K-6 school district into our supervisory union that is well over two hours away, and I understand there was a conversation already had about distance, how things can be done remotely. While I do understand that, I do find that I'm in my schools, each of my schools, to adequately supervise my administrators at least a couple times a week, so to reasonably and efficiently and effectively travel that distance would not be the case. We currently have our Lake Region Union Elementary School District consists of six K-8 schools, so our structure does not align with the K-6 Lincoln School District, and our, and our students feed right to the Lake Region Union High School. This past year, from last year to this school year, we had a 30% loss in staff across our supervisory union, and a 60% loss supervisory union and a 60% loss turnover in administrators. So currently, our supervisory union, our central office staff are all new, including myself. I'm in just my second year. But our business manager, most importantly, business manager and student services director are only seven months into their position, and we're currently running without a director of instruction, so that's also on my plate. What I, what I did hear from the earlier presentation was the Lincoln School District concerned about having the ability, if they were their own SU, to be able to carry the costs and the workload. And I, I too am concerned about that for our, our supervisory union as well. We're barely able to take care of the workload that's here with us right now with the staffing that we have. So I would have grave concerns on bringing aboard another district with such a new administrative staff. We are 1,200 students. We are made up of a supervisory union in two school districts, one the high school, one the K-8 elementary middle school. The other thing I'd like to just mention in addition to our letter is I look, I think about contracts and systems and data. We're headed into negotiations with our teaching staff at this point for their collective bargaining agreement. It will be expiring this coming school year. So that's a load that's on our, our school board as well at this time. And I do have a question where the Lincoln School talks about having a positive impact on students and efficiently and effectively having the financial support to be an SU to take on those central office expenses. I would like to have, you know, more information around what supports the merger with other supervisory unions. Instead of always looking at the deficits, I wonder what is the benefit? Because right now, I'm representing our school board, and they're feeling there is, there would not be a benefit to the Orlean Central Supervisory Union to take on the Lincoln School District, but it would potentially benefit the Lincoln School District. And that's all I have at this, at this time.
Board members' questions for Ms. Chamberlain? Okay. I did want to point out, I, I failed to mention at the, at the, at the start here, Lincoln had indicated some interest in, in assignment to the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union. I did hear from the superintendent there who indicated that due to pressing issues there, they just lack the capacity even to respond. And I took note of the fact that they're over two hours away from Lincoln and over 100 miles away. And I, absent objection from the board, I, I sort of treated that as a kind of a, not, not appropriate for discussion, but let me know if the board feels differently. So I excused them and, but I did note that the Rutland Northeast was not on the list. And I, in the spirit of trying to find a solution to a really thorny problem, I, I want to make sure that the board has really all reasonable options on the table. And I took note of the geographic proximity of that as a multi-district SU. So I have asked Rutland Northeast to, to make a presentation as well.
Oliver, can I just ask?
Yes.
I apologize if I missed it. Penny, it's very easy. Far either distance or time are you from Lincoln? I think you probably said it-
The question?
Yeah, that was for you. Yes, please.
We're 81 miles away, almost two hours.
Thank you very much. I, that's what I was thinking. I apologize for my lack of complete clarity on geography, but thanks so much.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to hear from the, the White River Supervisory Union.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Sarah Root. And beside me is Jamie Canarney. He's our superintendent. I'm the vice chair of the SU School Board. This is Kathy Galuzzo. She is the chair of the SU School Board. And behind us is Bill Edgerton, who is the, on the Rochester Stockbridge Board. And Ethan, who spoke earlier and had to leave as part of that board also, he's the chair of that board. I'm going to do some speaking, and Jamie has some prepared remarks, too. I have a copy for mine of both of ours for after, for you, if you'd like, if you'd like that. Guess it's better without glasses. WRVSU, the White River Valley Supervisory Union, is a district made up of 10 towns and six districts, along with a supervisory union board. We have six elementary schools, three middle schools, and one high school. Many of our towns are choice towns for high school, and we send our students predominantly to the Thuppert Academy, the White River Valley High School, the Sharon Academy, Hartford High School, and Hanover High School. We have recently gone through several mergers. We merged Orange Windsor SU and Windsor Northwest Supervisory Union, along with the SU mergers within our towns merging together. We have just completed votes over the past 15 months to keep two of our districts merged, and we believe that we are set to move forward now. Throughout all this change, the SU board and the district boards have worked diligently to come together, to work together, to coordinate policies and procedures, calendars, staff, curriculum, and many other things. We have just negotiated a three-year contract with our professional staff, and will enter into negotiations with our paraprofessional, this, paraprofessional staff this fall. Bringing all these separate contracts together took many tries and a long and difficult yet rewarding process. We are now at a place where we feel our relationships with our unions are productive and work for quali, and we work to, for quality education to our stu, for our students. We have been able to hire a superintendent who is dedicated to this district. He, in fact, comes out of this district. Under his leadership, we have hired high-quality administrative staff for our schools, and because of this leadership, we have few vacancies in our SU. We believe it is because of the, it is because people want to be part of our SU. The work and learning envi, learning environment are such that people want to be part of us. Our SU staff is outstanding, and they work long hours, attend an unknown number of meetings during the day and night. Our financial office has taken us out of the red, and we are now on good financial footing. When, as the SU board, we were told that there is a possibility that the State Board would merge Lincoln, Vermont with us, our hearts and our heads dropped in disbelief. We fear that all the hard work we have done will need to be restarted. We fear that the top-notch administrative team we've put together will be stretched too thin, and we worry that the high expectations we have of them will be unattainable. We fear that this merger will cause us to have to hire more SU employees, and that our towns will have to bear the cost of that. And the explanation that we will have to give to them is that now Lincoln, Vermont is in our SU, is in our SU. Lincoln, while I'm sure it's a wonderful town, is, is not one that the people in the Upper Valley identify with. We have no connection with them. Last night at the SU board meeting, we took a straw vote and stated unanimously, or voted unanimously, that we didn't think it was a good fit, and we could see no benefit for us in this merger. Lincoln borders Granville, the non, the one non-operative Granville Hancock district in our SU. Employees from Lincoln would have to drive a minimum of an hour and 10 minutes to reach the SU to bring in employment papers, documentation, et cetera. The distances between our school, schools is not conducive, would not be conducive to sharing, mentoring, and team building, which is a huge part of our working in the WRVSU. At a school, as a school board, we cannot think of one benefit this brings to us. We see higher taxes, harder negotiations as we try to bring a district that, that more closely aligns with Addison and Chittenden Counties, not Orange and Windsor. Hurdles around professional development, transportation, special ed, to name a few. It is our understanding that the town of Lincoln voted to leave their supervisory district because there was fear of their K-6 school closing. At the district board, all the district boards in our SU understand this. It is also our understanding that under the merger agreement with Mount Abraham and Addison Northwest, that school closure would have to be affirmatively voted on by town, by the town, and therefore would resolve this issue. It makes sense to put them in that, in this proposed, in the, to, to put, make them part of this proposed merger, or let them stand alone as a district. We do not see the reason to put them in the WRVSU. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I think I was here a year ago, but virtually. It's good to see you all in person. So I want to thank the Vermont State Board of Education for allowing us to present our concerns on the possibility of the Lincoln School District joining the member districts of WRVSU. I've had the pleasure of serving as the superintendent of schools of WRVSU over the past two school years. During this time, we have endured three different decoupling votes of merged districts, along with a complete restructuring of the WRVSU administrative offices due to significant financial difficulties after the merging of two prior supervisory unions. Those financial difficulties are well documented in the papers, by the way. I share this because it is my belief that we are finally in a position to deliver on the many promises made to the stakeholders of the 10 towns that make up the White River Valley Supervisory Union. I am equally concerned that the addition of a seventh district in 11th town that is 50 minutes from my closest school will result in further disruption of the supervisory union. We have worked diligently as a supervisory union to coordinate our efforts in delivering on the comprehensive, multi-tiered system of supports, proficiency-based learning and pathways, and increasing learner agency and student voice and choice while navigating an unprecedented pandemic. This work is resulting in revised WRVSU curriculum that we are partnering with the Agency of Education to develop, a newly revised WRVSU portrait of a graduate, WRVSU standards-based report cards across all of our elementary schools, and coordinated professional development across all 10 of our WRVSU schools. I share this because we are a "we" system. Although we are already a supervisory union of 10 towns that runs east to west across what we know to be difficult travel in our great state, all of my current schools neighbor each other by no more than 20 minutes of travel time between one school to the next. The closest WRVSU school to Link, is, to Lincoln is Rochester, which I mentioned previously is 50 minutes of travel time on a good day. Given the distance, increasing efficiency through the sharing of faculty and staff beyond our current footprint to include Lincoln is a major concern. I ask the State Board of Education to also take into account that we estimate that the additional staffing needed to support WRVSU coordinated programs like transportation, food service, special education, curriculum, instruction, assessment, fiscal services, human resources, and oversight will result in a conservative estimate of $450,325 to the WRVSU budgeted expenses. Why so much, you might ask? It is because we are positioned to share resources, it is because we are not positioned to share resources like o, other much closer organizations are to Lincoln. Lincoln is 6.3 miles from the MAUSD offices and 42.4 miles from WRVSU. The difference in travel times is 13 minutes versus an hour and four minutes. I share this because there is a reason why Lincoln has a longstanding relationship with the member towns of MAUSD. The increased expenses for the WRVSU budgets will result in increased assessments for all of our member WRVSU districts except for one. Two of those would be close to two cents on the tax rate, resulting in increased tax rates for the current member districts of WRVSU. Those figures were taken through ADM and Equalized Pupils from Lincoln from last year, and how we, how we assess assessments right now. In closing, I want to appreciate all of you for your service to the State Board of Education and for the difficult decision that you have to make regarding the assignment of the Lincoln School District. I'm confident that this decision will be made in the best interests of students. And I can submit it, too, for the record. Thank you.
Board members' questions?
Evidence happening in your SU. And I know those are not small tasks, and it is so gratifying to get to a place, having held from a unified district myself, to get to a place where you're returning on the promise. And to be able to do so in the culture of "we" you're describing is really impactful for students, I think. And obviously, your communities, I'm sure. So thank you.
Thank you.
So if I could just push you guys a little bit on the incremental expense. I don't, I don't think it's lost on anybody that there would be incremental expense, but there's also the ability to, you know, allocate that out through assessments, whether you want to do that on an ADM basis. But, you know, if, if you were able to allocate those assessments, you know, in a way that didn't disproportionately impact your, your member districts, I mean, wouldn't that be a reasonable solution that would ameliorate your concerns or, or your concerns beyond the, the financial ones?
I would say our concerns are beyond the financial.
Oh, yeah.
We have a superintendent now that's doing an outstanding job for us. We have a business manager that's doing an outstanding job. And the idea of them, they, they spend a lot of time in our buildings, the business manager, the academic officer, our superintendent, to, to, to pitcher having, we, we wouldn't want them to come, do a subpar job for Lincoln. And so they would need to spend time. So, so it's not just the financial piece. Our board talked about that at length last night.
So if I can restate your response and keep me, hopefully that helps. So their board had a lengthy discussion last night, and, and their concerns are not just financial, but be, beyond financial. They had significant concerns. Did I capture that?
Yes.
Maybe just to, because this will probably apply to other things, Oliver, the assessment, and maybe you can enlighten us as well, assessment of SU fees, it's typically done by ADM, or how is it typically done?
Each board can make that decision of how they're going to do that. We do it by average daily membership.
Okay. Is that, and Dan, I'm wondering if that's something you could say. Is that typical? I don't really know. Just so we would have an idea of how flexible their ability is to-
It's flexible. You know, typically has to be a logic behind it to get the member, you know, to Oliver's point, the voters don't vote on it. The SU board determines the assessments. ADM is a very common one. Child count is also very common, I think, with, that's special ed count of students. So you can have multiple ways of assessing various costs.
And fair to say that if they were to say, we're going to charge the whole $4.50 or whatever to, to Lincoln, you would need to change your entire structure for how you bill out assessment, because you wouldn't just do it. Like, you couldn't just randomly, I don't, I don't actually know. I'm just a, I'm just questioning that it has to be some logic to, to Dan's point that is consistently applied. So your best estimate is that you've got that increase that would then be spread across all of the SDs in the model that you're currently doing it, and it would increase-
That's the model we're currently doing.
Yep, and it would increase costs accordingly.
I think it's also important to note, based on what we're finding in ADM, that Lincoln's enrollment is decreasing significantly over the last few years, which would be a concern for us around ADM.
Dan?
Jamie, in your written testimony, do you have a, what's behind the $4.50? I'm just interested.
I have a whole document and-
Okay, as long as you could provide it.
Somewhere right here. Yeah, I can definitely provide that.
Yeah, if you could, would mind sending that off to Maureen and Suzanne, and we'll make sure we got that-
It's a whole broad, broken down budget.
Perfect. Jennifer?
So I just want to make sure I've sort of captured some of your data. One is that you're forecasting a 2%, or I'm sorry, a 2% increase to the tax rate to all towns except for one.
Not all towns, two of my largest districts.
Okay, okay. And then, does that include, I'm just curious about employee contracts? Because I heard you say that you've just negotiated all of your professional-
That is estimating staff that we would bring on at the SU level. For example, technology specialists, food service, another accountant. I mean, one of the things, when I talk about restructuring our SU, we restructured to be much less top-heavy at the supervisory union offices. It resulted in us doing a reduction in force of four administrators when I came onboard into one chief academic officer position. And so to try to size it as correctly as we could to get out of the red that we were in, because the SU had been running deficits of close to- because the SU had been running deficits of close to $1 million the prior two years combined. And so there was major concerns around trust of the supervisory union within the 10 district towns. And so the addition of another budget, another payroll, another accounts payable will result in me needing to bring back some staff in my business office. Right now, we serve six districts with three people in the business office.
So I'm curious if within your supervisory union, do you have consistency of payroll for teachers? Like, is that all, like, they're all sort of at the same rate?
Yes, we have one unified contract that we just settled. And our concern is, is that my sense is Lincoln must, would need to start to negotiate a new CBA with the teachers in Lincoln because those teachers currently work under the contract of MAUSD. And certainly a concern for us is that, having had emerged two supervisory unions, when we go back to the negotiation table, I can't imagine that my teachers that we currently serve are going to think that it's okay for them to get paid less than Lincoln teachers. And the contract right now at Lincoln does pay more than the contract at WRVSU.
And do you also have consistent curriculum within your schools? Okay. And do you know if that curriculum is the same or different than what Lincoln has?
Well, curriculum's a local district choice. It's based off of, of course, the work that's done at the Agency of Ed. So I'm certain there's differences. And I'm certain they're not using the same report card that we're rolling out. Which, which is, a report card reports on those ends, right? Those proficiencies and expectations that we want students to have at the end of each grade level.
Board members, other questions for, yes, Dr. Colby?
Um, who is making sure that you was the, having an issue with educational opportunity for our students? A key provision of that is ensuring special education purposes that comply with the RVE. Do you feel that it's difficult to ensure AP and LRE and adequate and appropriate special education services for students in Lincoln under the proposed configuration?
I definitely have concerns because it's a small school district. That is, the closest school I have to provide supports and services to share would be Rochester. And that's why I brought Rochester up, is we, a lot of our service providers, like PTs, OTs, SLP, triple E teachers, we share across multiple districts and schools. And that works because we have cluster schools that are about 20 minutes apart. I'm really concerned about the ability to share that staffing when it's 50 minutes.
At best.
Yeah, at best, yeah, at best. So that is a concern. The other concern is we have a strong partnership with our community-based mental health provider, Claire Martin Center, to provide things like school-based services, behavioral specialists, case managers in my schools. And being able to work with them across another whole county would pose a problem that we would have to solve.
I'm hearing operational challenges. I'm also wondering about cost. What's the difference in your cost structure for providing special education and related services?
That was a conservative estimate on special education. My sense, I always go conservative, my boards know that. My sense is it could be even higher. Ms. Colby? I do have those breakdowns, it was on paper somehow between my seat there and here. I don't have it, but you'll have it.
And do you have questions?
Other questions, board members?
Thank you all for your time today. I would encourage you to stick around if we have any follow-up questions.
Do you want copies of our...
Yes, please. If you wouldn't mind providing copies to Maureen and if you can make sure she has the electronic copy as well of everything.
Thank you for hearing us today.
Yes, thank you. So next up, Montpelier-Roxbury Supervisory District. Do we have somebody from the Montpelier-Roxbury? Yes, Libby Bonesteel.
Yes, I am here. Hi, thanks.
And just, just before you start, Libby, I just want to be clear. Montpelier-Roxbury is a supervisory district, not a supervisory union. So this, as a prospect, would actually involve the deconstruction of a supervisory district into a multi-district SU. So that is effectively what would be entailed with this option. So...
Yes, yes, and I appreciate you saying that. Yes, as you just said, we are a supervisory district. Board, one central office, we do not have multiple school districts. We have one school district. So if this forced merger were to happen to MRPS, then we would be completely redesigning and overhauling not only our governance structure, but also our financial systems, our curriculum. Every service that we provide for our schools would have to be restructured. It makes very little sense considering that we're a school district. Our board has unanimously, and unequivocally... A little feedbacks. Said no to this union. They are not interested in having any new governance structures. Our community voted on our merger the year before I came in 2017. I've been in this district for five years and there is no conversation about wanting to become a supervisory union going forward. There, the Lincoln School Board Chair, with all due respect, talks about efficiency quite a bit. I'm not positive why they'd be looking at a school district in order to create efficiency, because there is zero efficiency to be had by joining our school district. In terms of staffing, it just should not be part of the conversation. I've been a school administrator now in one way or another for approximately, for over 10 years. And staffing is one of those areas that school administrators know that we cannot count on. So the fact that Lincoln has a stable staff now makes no difference to a school administrator as we know staffing turns over quickly. And we have no, no control over this. When I hear a 30-year principal, all that tells me is that the superintendent who will be taking, taking charge of Lincoln School, Community School, would be hiring a new principal very soon. Because 30 years is a long time for a principal to be at the helm. And regardless of how good a job that principal has done at that school, they will be nearing retirement soon. And so superintendent would be in charge of that. The other piece that I think about in that terms, there were 31% of principals who overturned, who turned over last year. That's 141 principal openings. Lincoln is in a relatively small area. So a superintendent would be having to hire a principal for a potentially hard-to-hire school soon. The comment of not burdening the superintendent because Lincoln is already a well-functioning school...
Libby, we've lost you, you're frozen.
I think you're back.
Sorry about that, I'm in a hotel room. So the idea of not burdening a superintendent, I know every one of these superintendents in this meeting today and every single one of us is in our schools often. And while we know that virtual options are available now, the distance to most of our school buildings would just be hard to overcome. I'd be, I'd be spending two hours in the car just to get to Lincoln and back to my central office. So just in, in closing, it just, it makes no sense for Montpelier-Roxbury. The Lincoln School Board Chair discusses the benefits and the efficiencies to their 70 students. And I'm really hard-pressed to find any efficiencies or benefits for my 1,200 students at Montpelier-Roxbury. How do you take any questions?
Thank you. Questions, board members?
Not seeing any. Thank you.
It's crystal clear, thank you.
Thank you, Libby, we appreciate it. So moving on, Grand Isle Supervisory Union.
Good afternoon. Michael Barton, Superintendent for the Grand Isle Supervisory Union. Actually, I'd like to start, though, with, my previous role before this was the superintendent for the Essex-Caledonia Supervisory Union. And the board, it's been about, I think, six and seven years since the last three times I was at the board. And I came to the board at those times because we were in the process of eliminating the Essex-Caledonia Supervisory Union and merging it with three other entities that were existing, which changed structures in some cases. And every time that happened, throughout all 22 of those towns, when we came to the state board, we came with the new merged district or supervisory union, how they would be governed, and the people that came with, everybody was at the table. So when the Northeast Kingdom Choice merged 10 non-operating districts into a single supervisory district, it came with representatives from the Essex-North Supervisory Union who were ready to take them on, understood how that worked, spent months figuring out what that structure would look like. When Waterford merged with the two towns from Caledonia Central, they came, there was their merger to create the supervisory district and how they would receive supervisory union services from Caledonia Central. When Concord and Lunenburg merged with what was then Caledonia North, those seven towns created the Kingdom East District. They came before the state board with a plan of how the central office services would be created within a supervisory district. Seems that this process to unmerge without understanding what the implications for your centralized services are going to be is a little premature. And I recognize, listening today, that that may be a large part of what the problem is. And some people are recognizing that. But I think I'd like to be on the record also recognizing that that's the case. I wrote an extensive letter to you explaining what I thought the challenges were within the Grand Isle Supervisory Union. I wrote that letter as a superintendent, not in, not for my board, but thinking about what my board would perhaps be concerned about. And I did that because it wasn't, we, Grand Isle Supervisory Union was approached on or about September 1st through a letter about an interest in perhaps joining our supervisory union. The chair of our supervisory union board immediately put that on the very next agenda, which was last night, and invited the person who sent it from Lincoln to attend and be a part of that process. I failed, as you saw in my letter, to see a positive of having Lincoln join the Grand Isle Supervisory Union. I did not see how it would be helpful for the Grand Isle Supervisory Union. Was prepared to start the meeting last night by having Lincoln share with our board what that positive might be. Nobody was there. My board, as a result, sent me to this meeting. They made this motion at the meeting and asked that I convey it to you. And it was passed unanimously.
Before you continue, there's, we're getting some feedback. So those of you online, if you could please mute, we would appreciate it. And Suzanne, if you wouldn't mind trying to mute whoever's creating the background noise, that would be great. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so the unanimous motion of the Grand Isle Supervisory Union Board passed last night was, "Based on the conversation we have had here tonight and our superintendent's recommendation, I move that we direct our superintendent to inform the Vermont State Board of Education at its meeting on September 28th, 2022, that the Grand Isle Supervisory Union Board does not support the inclusion of the Lincoln School District in the Grand Isle Supervisory Union as we believe including the Lincoln School District would be detrimental to how the Grand Isle Supervisory Union operates and will negate the positive progress that GISU has made over the last several years." The one piece that I'll highlight from my letter that's different than what I think you're hearing from other superintendencies, you know, my letter has the distance, my letter has the staffing, all of those, all of those pieces, the expenses. I mean, yes, we're talking about adding a little 100, we're talking about adding a 120-ish member district to the, some small, the costs are not proportional to the ADM at the central office. Let's just be clear about that. So any superintendent who would take this on should look at Oliver's astute mention that it does not have to be based on ADM. But I would add, each of the years I've been, I'm in my fifth year at the Grand Isle Supervisory Union, each of the five years that I have been there, Secretary French has had to address a letter to the Grand Isle Supervisory Union indicating that we are a high-risk sub-recipient of federal grants. We have worked hard to get off that list. The letter each year gets progressively better. But it doesn't say you're not a high risk. And it's not going to say that we're not a high risk next year either. But it does say we're getting better. Taking on all of the responsibility that comes with taking on Lincoln will, I am very concerned, negate that positive progress. And so I'd be happy to answer questions, but I think I'd let my letter stand.
Thank you. Board members, questions? Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Next, we have LaMoyles South Supervisory District.
Hi, everyone.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thanks, thanks. It's nice to meet you in person. My name's Ryan Hardey, I'm superintendent of LaMoyles South. We cover Elmore, Moorestown, and Stowe. So first, I just wanted to thank you for the meeting on July 20th and for hearing our presentation around Stowe's withdrawal and the recreation of a supervisory union. So when we received this letter from Lincoln, we were pretty surprised because we had been going through for a while a very complicated situation politically with the people in our town and a lot of tension and a lot of distraction that was taken away from teaching and learning. And so when I first discussed this with our board chair, the first conversation that we had was, you know, how could this possibly improve learning outcomes for students? And we looked into it and really thought about it. And just the geographic location by itself is, you know, is a deal breaker as far as, you know, supporting student learning and improving outcomes for kids, which is why we're all here. And when we presented on July 20th, we presented a very comprehensive plan. So the reason Mr. Jebson asked a very important question at the end of the meeting, and he asked, "Why? Why are you doing this? Why are you, you know, creating this?" And we had a very clear response to that, which was, it was about capital improvement. Our supervisory union structure will be much easier for us to hopefully build a new school or build a new wing and improve some of the schools that drastically require capital improvements, which directly impact student learning. And that was really the driver around why we were requesting the board to create the supervisory union structure. When we went through that process, we also involved the public, we involved our electorate. We wanted to make sure that prior to doing something, prior to presenting something, we had the support of our citizens, we had the support of our teachers, of our educators, of the people that lived in our towns. This today is, in my opinion, not being presented with all the information that the electorate with the educators, with the people that would be involved in this process would need to know prior to making a decision that would have a very large impact on students and on communities and potentially on tax rates. And so with that, I would just say that LaMoyles South unanimously supports not being involved with Lincoln, although we do wish Lincoln the best in their, and it's a beautiful school. I drove by it today for the first time on the hour and a half journey here. And it's a very pretty road, very pretty drive. And I do wish them the best in their process. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Board members, questions?
Just, what is the distance?
The geographic distance?
47 miles.
Okay, like, how long does that take by car?
It's about 90 minutes. Yeah, maybe, maybe a little less, but...
So 47 miles, I mean, we've heard from another SU that was 80 miles away. There was another one that isn't here today that was 100 miles away. 47 miles in that context sounds not unreasonable. And you guys have experience with withdrawals, so, you know, I'll... You know, I guess, back to, you know, Lyle's question, you, back in... You know, I guess, back to Lyle's question, you back in July, I mean, other than some concern about the geography, what other concerns do you have?
Yeah, so we articulate our concerns in the letter, and really, it's about the importance of central office administration being involved in the education of students. And we know right now that, you know, virtual, although there are some benefits to virtual, administrators really need to be in buildings. And we have a potential large capital improvement project that's coming our way. We are starting our portrait of a graduate process in two weeks. We have a lot of transition that we're taking place—that is taking place over the next few weeks. We have a 6:00 PM meeting tonight to elect the new Stowe School District Board, and so if you see me depart, that's where I'll be headed for that meeting. So geographically, yes, it's challenging. Also, as a school district and a supervisory—future supervisory union, we have a lot going on right now, and trying to add anything else onto that plate would be extremely difficult for us. And also, we have a—the supervisory union that we're looking to create was created with a lot of input, a lot of feedback, careful consideration of the costs and of that structure. And so it wasn't done—it was done in a very careful and thoughtful way when we presented.
I'm going to ask what's going to sound like a very common question. Do you have a unified curriculum, unified teacher contracts? Do you have any sense of how bringing Lincoln in would change any of that, if you do?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we just—last year, created a coordinated curriculum across our district, and so we went through that process last year of prioritizing standards, of creating a new report card, essentially all of the comments that Jamie made about trying to create a more efficient system. With our return to a supervisory union, we intend to keep all of those processes in place. We intend to have a portrait of a graduate that is across our supervisory union. We intend to have the same report cards, the same curriculum process. We're participating in professional development right now that's across our district, and, you know, already, it's a challenge with the geography that we have. So although Morrisville and Stowe are only 15, you know, 20 minutes away, it's a challenge to take our teachers out of their buildings and bring them to, you know, to a centralized location for professional development. But we do it because we know that it works best. And when teachers have that opportunity to collaborate and spend time together, that's when true learning happens. So adding, you know, teachers that are, you know, such a far distance away, that wouldn't be a reasonable request for them, I don't believe.
And are your teacher salaries, are those unified as well?
Yeah, so we just signed—last year, we just implemented a three-year contract, and so we're hoping that our contract will be able to be sustained, and our union is behind that. Our union has not considered a potential addition of Lincoln in that conversation. Right now, they would like to have the Morrisville-Elmore teachers and the Stowe teachers involved in the similar same agreement. And there was a time where they had two different agreements, and so we're hoping that we can continue with the great process we have.
When are you looking to conclude those negotiations?
I'm sorry, could you—
When are you looking to conclude those negotiations?
They've just been—
Oh, they just were.
They were concluded last spring.
Okay.
Yeah, so we began the first year of our third-year contract this year.
Okay, got it. Other questions, Board members?
Do you have a sense with your employee contracts how that rate compares to what Lincoln might be offering to its teachers, if you know?
I haven't done an analysis of that. I'd have to take a look at it.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Lori Bertrand. I am the Chair of the Rutland-Northeast Supervisory Union, and I'm here with Brenda Fleming, our Director of Finance from the—from our supervisory union. So I'm going to let my letter stand, pretty much, but I want to answer some questions that I think you're going to ask me based on questions you've asked everybody else. So, number one, we—the central office from here to Lincoln is about 50 minutes. It is about—actually, it's an hour, and we are 47 miles away. Our supervisory union runs all the way from Barstow, which is at the tip of Pinco Mountain, all the way to Lester, which is just inside of Addison County, next to Salisbury. We would not be able to share services with Lincoln based on the fact that it's too far away, and we would feel that our special services for students would have to be a standalone system in Lincoln instead of shared staff like we would have in our other schools just because of the proximity of geography, especially when it's cold and roads aren't plowed and trying to get people together is difficult. Also, based on their size, we would be looking at part-time positions for those staff, and those are hard to fill even for full-time positions because there aren't enough people out there, as everyone knows, and finding part-time staff would be even more difficult. Also, based on our teacher contracts, our teacher contract was just renegotiated last year. We are in the first year of a three-year contract right now. We are in the middle of the PAC down in Brandon. We are lower than ACSD. We are also lower than Rutland for what they pay teachers, and so I can only assume that Lincoln's pay scale is higher than ours and would constitute an issue when it would come to our collective bargaining agreement that we have had for over 50 years. And we also wouldn't have a hard time providing transportation. We don't have enough bus drivers now. We do own our own bus fleet, and so bringing in bus drivers and buses to Lincoln, I believe, would be difficult also.
So your letter spoke about something I didn't hear in any of the other testimony, and it had to do with, I believe, is the Title I comparability test. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I'm going to let Brenda talk about that a little bit.
Thank you. So Title I requires that we do not fund a wealthier school with better or more favorable student-to-teacher ratios than we do a poor school. So the whole intention of Title I is to make sure that we are providing our services for those students that are socially, economically disadvantaged and never, you know, at a risk of more funds to a higher school—to a richer school. That's already a challenge for us because we have a span of poverty figures from approximately 20% in the Barstow School District to about 70% at one of our sites in the Otter Valley School District. The bringing on of a small school with a lower poverty ratio than we have—and I looked it up at the time, it was a few years ago—that Lincoln is much lower poverty than we've been looking at would mean that our biggest and still poorest school, which is Nashabye, a school of about 450 students, would have to match the student ratio of that richer school. And so if they had class sizes of—I think you said 70 kids, so if they had K through six or K through eight class sizes of 70 children, 70 students, we'd be looking at adding upwards to eight to 10 professional positions at Nashabye to meet that requirement. And that would be insurmountable, obviously, both in financing, but also in finding them and our facilities wouldn't hold adding that many more classrooms. So one of the things that I've noticed missing in a lot of these conversations is that comparability for Title I funds.
So—and this is a really—I found this really interesting because the impact there—is so we've been talking a lot about sort of SU-wide impacts, right? So, you know, things like transportation, food service that are managed at the SU level, and that having an impact across the SU in the form of assessments, and if they're not—if there isn't some other assessment mechanism, it defaults to buy ADM, and there's sort of equitable distribution of those liabilities. But in this case, you would have—if I'm hearing you correctly, it would not be an SU impact. It would be an impact on that other school district that's a member of the SU. And ironically, if I'm hearing you correctly, the impact would be that by taking in a school district such as Lincoln that has lower student poverty numbers, is a more affluent community, the tax rate in the less affluent community would have to go up to support this increased staffing within that district. Do I have that right?
That's a bittersweet irony.
Okay. Board members—
And said much more eloquently than I did. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure I was tracking there. Board members, questions? Lyle.
Just a minute, what your articles are saying about school closures?
Yeah, so we have a—in Otter Valley's district, we can close a school with a supermajority, which is nine of 13 of our member voting yes to close it.
It'll be the Board members voting.
I will also—yes, and I also will tell you that we have already reconfigured our three smallest schools, so Sudbury, Whiting, and Lester have all been reconfigured. Lester is now our pre-K through—actually, our K through six. Whiting is our daycare and preschool, and Sudbury had been vacant for the last two years until this year. We are now using it for elementary special ed.
But just to be clear, an SU does not have the power to close a school. It's a school district.
It's the school district.
So whether—your articles aren't particularly relevant to, I think, this discussion.
That's true. However, it would cause some—we're policy governance. I don't know if that would make a huge difference, but bringing in another district into the Rutland-Northeast Supervisory Union would be three more members into our already existing six-member Board. I can be honest, I have no idea what might be issues for Lincoln that may not be issues for our smaller, more geographically diverse groups of kids.
Thank you for bringing that up. Donna, I'm going to queue you up. I'm not going to put you on the spot right now, but I would love to hear your interpretation of recent legislation. I don't know if it was Act 176 or the miscellaneous ed bill that spoke to the State Board's powers with respect to representation on supervisory union boards. I believe there have been some changes there, so I'll—we'll come—we'll return to you, Donna, if you're listening. Other questions for—
[inaudible]
Other questions for—sounds like the voice from above. Yes?
I appreciate the attention to the Title I comparability test because that is definitely impactful and concerning, and if I were to—I'm trying to think about the flip side of that is the flip side that the Lincoln School could cut staff and increase class size, but the SU would really have no authority to compel that.
That would be true.
That would be right.
Both of those things are right, right? Like, it fixes the comparability problem, but the SU, who bears the responsibility of the problem, has no authority to affect the change that would be necessary.
Right, and that was a finding. That's why we brought it up. It was one of our findings.
Basically, setting a marriage up for immediate conflict.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And I think at risk to the SU is Title I funding, and, you know, right now, that's about $850,000.
Board members, other questions? Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
For us, maybe put a pin in it, like, if this is an issue for others and not been directly brought to our attention, I would like to see that.
We need that, yeah.
Because I think that's—that's not something I was anticipating or thinking as much about.
All righty. Next up, Central Vermont Supervisory Union.
Good afternoon. I have to give you one second. So thank you, Chair Olson, and the Board members. My name's Matthew Fetters. I am the Superintendent of Central Vermont Supervisory Union. We're comprised of four towns, Northfield, Williamstown, Orange, and Washington. Those are all in the counties of Orange and Washington. We currently have six schools. Four of those schools are within Payne Mountain School District and can make up about 1,000 of our 1,300 students. Echo Valley School District has about 300 of our other students. So adding Lincoln School District, their 70-some students that are in the elementary school, as well as, I believe, about 90 students at the high school, doesn't seem like it would be a proportional impact. But as my letter shares, there certainly are concerns with efficiencies. And, you know, this new language in 16 VSA talks about the purpose of creating these new supervisory unions is to afford increased efficiency or greater convenience and economy. We do not have increased efficiency here, and this certainly would not add convenience or economy to Central Vermont Supervisory Union. With the efficiencies, I listened to the LSD Chair Oldham, and I would agree. I mean, most of us are dealing with the same sort of challenges when it comes to—to is this going to improve efficiencies and are we willing to take on the district? We get it. Nobody wants to upset what they have going. And I really tried my hardest to find all of those reasons that there was an inability. And I looked at mileage, and I looked at other surrounding districts, and, you know, Central Vermont Supervisory Union is probably the closest district. Using, you know, Google, we're about 24 miles away, but we are driving through the Montpelier-Roxbury and Harwood Unified School Districts in order to get there. We're driving over two mountain ranges, and in the winter, we're driving up to Waterbury in order to head south to get there. And so, you know, we estimate that at a minimum 45 minutes, and in the winter, there would be a lot more travel. The school board chair from Lincoln had mentioned that she feels that adequate supervision would be appropriate and that there would be little burden to the superintendent. I understand that feeling. However, adequate supervision is not the statutory requirement. It's reasonable supervision. And as a superintendent, I really believe that reasonable supervision is going to require being in that campus on a regular basis, and not just by myself, but by my curriculum director, and most importantly, my special education director. There are certain things that certainly can't be done remotely. We have supervision of the facilities and have to support the maintenance and any upgrades to those facilities. And I think our business chair, who also serves as our facilities director, that would really impact their capacity. So I do—you know, in our analysis, we certainly do not believe that there are added efficiencies. Where I feel that we are different than other districts—Chair Olson started to mention about supervisory union boards and some recent statutory language that would allow for school boards to seek a waiver so that they could have a different board composition than the traditional 3-3. Our Payne Mountain School District was very excited to see that language because since they merged with Echo Valley, although a supervisory union board does not factor in proportionality of the population, Payne Mountain School District has always been soured by the fact that a district of 1,000 only has three board members and a district of 300 only has three board members on our Central Vermont Supervisory Board. When I brought this information to the Payne Mountain School District specifically, they felt like this would take their concern over disproportionate representation completely out of order, where Payne Mountain School District would have 1,000 of our—even if we absorbed Lincoln School District, we would have—let's say we have 1,400 students, 1,000 of those students represented by Payne Mountain. They feel disproportionately affected by having three voting members from Lincoln and three voting members from Echo Valley, to the point of dissatisfaction that after I brought this information up to the— To the point of dissatisfaction that after I brought this information up to them, they directed me to seek legal counsel on their own rights to withdraw from the Payne Mountain School District if Lincoln School District were to become a member. Now, I understand that the state board would have to approve that decision, but if that were to occur, and I think there would be a strong question as to, it's been approved for Lincoln, why not for, for Payne Mountain? But if that were to occur, Central Vermont Supervisory Union would be left with Lincoln to the, the west with approximately a hundred and fifty students K-12, and Echo Valley to the east with approximately three hundred students. The Payne Mount, or the Central Vermont Supervisory Union would be separated by Payne Mountain, and I effectively would lose about a thousand students. I don't see that the state board would, would continue Central Vermont at that time. They would then be forced to determine where a placement would be for Echo Valley, and again, possibly for Lincoln School District. So, you know, I have the same concerns that there would be no efficiencies realized. I do believe that we run a lean central office staff that appropriately serves our six schools and thirteen hundred students. And adding an additional school, even one with, with seventy-some students, is going to strain our resources to the point that I can't say next year, but in the next couple of years, there would be a need to increase our supervisory union staff. You know, there's been this talk as to, would, would Lincoln School District be a tax burden or a tax benefit to our other towns? And, you know, if Lincoln School District were to join Central Vermont Supervisory Union, I see our total school enrollment, or SU enrollment, going up by about fifteen percent. And logically, I would assume that that fifteen percent could be proportionately distributed as a savings to our current two districts. The, the problem I see, though, is that I have five licensed administrators at the central office. And even adding one more FTE, one more administrator to the central office, would instantly wipe out that fifteen percent savings. And so it's not that we couldn't do it with our current makeup this year, but over the next couple of years, any real efficiency that we might realize will have gone away. I, you know, I told you that I looked at the map. I tried to find every reason to say no to this. And I even went as far as to reach out to the Lincoln School District Board to meet with two of their board representatives under principal. And although it was a great meeting and we got along, it went really well, but just the fact that their transportation is so far from us, we will need a separate transportation contract. No efficiency there. We will need a separate partnership for food services. No efficiencies there. We will have to contract with school districts that are closer to Lincoln for special education resources and services, or we're going to be forced to send our staff driving over mountain ranges just to provide services. I see that in a six-hour day, they're ultimately going to provide two to three hours of service on that day. There's no efficiency realized there either. And so I, I do not believe there are any efficiencies. Let me just look here. We talked about the, you know, I heard Chair Olson talk about the concern and that it would be an unacceptable risk for Lincoln to become their own school district. I think it's an unacceptable risk to place Lincoln with CVSU and put us in a position where I am fairly certain that the largest district within my, my supervisory union would seek the same process and ask to withdraw from our, our supervisory union. This is a marriage that is, is already destined to fail. And, and I thank you for giving Central Vermont Supervisory Union the opportunity to submit a letter as well as speak to you today. I'll accept questions if you'd like.
Thank you. Board members, questions? Patrick.
Yes, Mr. Fetters. Thank you for that presentation. I, and I may have missed it. What's the distance to Lincoln from your place?
I cringe to tell you when I hear the other ones. You know, according to Google, the, the most direct way is only twenty-four miles, but Google puts that at forty-five minutes as of today. As soon as there's snow on the ground, that twenty-four minute, or twenty-four miles, we're going to have one of those mountain passes closed during the winter. We're now looking at a forty-four mile trip in the winter up to, past Montpelier before we can head south. So I, I do estimate, even with those concerns, we are one of the closer districts, and I accept that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So next on the list was the Orange East SU, although the superintendent there is not able to be with us today. I don't know if there's anybody else from Orange East. Again, they had intended to be here, their superintendent was going to represent them, but had a very tragic death in the family just a few days ago. So next, we'll hear, yes? We did receive written, yeah, we do have written, written feedback, yeah.
Just to sort of point to it, and it's in the package.
Exactly, yep. So next, we'll hear from Addison Northwest Supervisory District. Is there anybody here from Addison Northwest? Yes. So I, in an effort to leave no stone unturned, we are looking at everyone here in the region.
Well, then this is completely off the cuff, but I will reiterate what I shared with you in June. We are a district experiencing declining enrollment. However, since the Act Forty-Six merger, our first year was 2017-18, we have been able to realize efficiencies, remain somewhat stable in our budgeting, and have, you know, achieved success, I guess you could say, under the merger. With our declining enrollment, we've gone just about as far as we can to preserve programming. So we've entered into this merger study with Mount Abe in an effort to sustain or perhaps even grow programming for students in our community. And the vote for that is November eighth. Our board agrees that our district is a preferred structure for many of the reasons why others have already elaborated upon. We're obviously quite close to Lincoln, but under the circumstances, we are, you know, involved in this merger study and would like to see that through.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Yes, Dan.
Sheila, the, a decision today on the part of the board, how would, do you think that might impact voters on the merger? Is it, is it related?
Well, my understanding is Lincoln did not want to be considered advisory in that and has elected not to vote on the merger, so I don't know from a legal standpoint where that puts us.
Yeah, I was thinking more politically, you know?
Yeah.
How would that be perceived, do you think?
I think it would just bring question and controversy, and wherever there's ambiguity, I think that's usually perceived negatively, so I would worry that that would impact the vote for, for folks just not really understanding what the impacts will be in the long term. It doesn't provide our merger study committee much time to reroute, and, you know, they're preparing currently for the informational meetings on October eighteenth and nineteenth, I believe, and they'd have to sort of restructure that communication in order to address the recent development.
Sheila, if you could just state your name for the record, I really.
Sure, Sheila Soul, Superintendent of Addison Northwest. And again, I apologize. I didn't know you were going to have me prepare.
No worries. This, this is, ah, perfect. So next, we'd like to hear from the Mount Abe unified district. So obviously, you've, you've seen the correspondence from the Lincoln School District dated July nineteenth, the correspondence of September first, and then the testimony earlier. And I think, and please keep me honest, folks, I think I heard a little bit of a shift from the September first letter to a suggestion that now there might be some interest in forming a supervisory union with Mount Abe, so I, I want to make sure we hear your thoughts on that.
Good afternoon, Chair and board members. I'm Kevin Hanson, MAUSD board member.
Liz Seo from Bristol, MAUSD board.
Bailey Lane Gordon from Moncton, USD board.
Hi, I'm Krista Seringo. I represent the board from Bristol, and I'm the vice chair.
And Patrick Reed, superintendent.
So, the Mount Abe Board passed a resolution, June one, to basically commit, make a statement and empower, at the time, our chair and superintendent to discuss with the state board at a previous meeting, our desires to remain as a supervisory district. The resolution is, whereas the State Board of Education, through its chair, has stated the possibility of deconstructing MAUSD, presently a supervisory district, into a supervisory union with respect to the separation of Lincoln and/or other towns as necessary to accommodate the possible need of those towns for a supervisory union, the Board of MAUSD is opposed to that possibility. It is a desire to maintain a supervisory district, considering the educational opportunities it provides students, provides efficiency of management, and avoids unnecessary costs. And also, got a short synopsis from a report that a group called New Solutions, K-12, which is, the principal is Nate Levinson, which probably most of you are very aware of. This past summer, he, this, our board has engaged with the community for probably almost two years now on how to manage within our district the declining enrollment and the underutilization of our facilities. It sparked a lot of community engagement. We ended up receiving community proposals, if you will. We had Levinson's group evaluate those proposals. He came up with a variety of suggestions. He did not see any single proposal that was the one, if you will, but there was a lot of different components on various proposals that he, he provided some opinions on. And one of them that I'm about to read about is the consolidation of central offices. And the discussion goes around the difference between a supervisory district, advantage of that compared to a supervisory union. So I've got on my phone, and I didn't bring my reading contacts with me, so, barely me as I try to read this. "The analysis of both considers the benefit of a merger. In a merger of two districts become one with a single superintendent, a single school board, and a single workforce. There is an alternative to a merger, and that's a supervisory union. In this model, two districts with two school boards share a superintendent and central office, but some, but not likely all, the financial benefits of a merged central office could be achieved. Technically, a hundred percent of the savings from a merged central office could be had via a supervisory union. But in practice, that seldom happens. There are two reasons for this. First, every change must be approved by two boards, not one. Typically, fewer changes are approved when two boards must agree. Second, running a supervisory union is more complex and takes more time. Often, each district has a different budget, different professional development, different curriculum, and so on. Much of the work has to be done twice, so more staff is needed. A supervisory union could achieve perhaps half of the savings of a merged central office, but maybe less if the both, less if both school boards aren't in sync." So that's a pretty powerful statement to, for us to consider, along with our reservations, when we're looking at how we are trying to, you know, utilize our facilities given our situation with employment. So you're next.
Hi, I'm Bailey Lane Gordon. Although I am speaking to you today as a MAUSD board member, I am also a mom of five, a foster parent, military wife, and a school-based occupational therapist. To say that I'm in the thick of it is an understatement. Although there are many things to consider in this decision, I truly believe the most important piece is how your decision will directly impact the students involved. School districts around the country are facing the same challenges that the schools represented in this room are now facing, with staffing shortages, continued concerns of COVID, and the fragile mental health of our students and staff. Turning Mount Abraham Union School District back into a supervisory union would be detrimental to the stability that our students so desperately need right now. Some may not think that moving back to an SU would directly affect students, however, my own children have supports from staff who are shared with other school buildings. Those staff members are in full-time positions with the district, however, that would not be the case in a supervisory union situation. Those staff members would be considered part-time in two different buildings and most likely not qualify for benefits in either location. This could force some staff members to look elsewhere for jobs that would provide them with full-time hours and corresponding benefits that their families need. This would also in turn make these vital and required positions nearly impossible to fill. This could have a ripple effect across our other schools, causing challenges in providing the least restrictive environment and IEP services for many students. I'm sure that student welfare and outcomes are priorities for everyone in this room. Changing Mount, Mount Abraham Union School District back to supervisory union will have a direct effect on student support and their access to education. I am asking you to consider the needs of all students in this situation, and I ask Lincoln Community School to return to our school community as it stands as a school district and not a supervisory union. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to speak today. As I said, my name is Krista Seringo. I'm in the town of Bristol, and I'm the vice chair. First, I'd like to take a moment to read a letter from our board chair, Don Griswold, who's not able to be here today, and then I just had a few other remarks to add. And so this is from Don. "I'm writing this today from a place of concern. As I understand it, the State Board of Education is once again considering the possibility of deconstructing MAUSD to a supervisory union. I am not in favor of this action. In 2016, our five-town communities overwhelmingly voted in support of consolidation and in changing from an SU to an SD, supervisory union to a supervisory district. A great deal of our community members, including the town of Lincoln, supported this plan. They saw the potential to improve equity and educational outcomes for our learners by unifying as a school district. In fact, when this board was presented with our final Act Forty-Six Articles of Agreement, it was touted as a model for other communities to follow. We received praise for our thoughtful report, which spoke to educational improvements and values expressed by our voters. Returning MAUSD to a supervisory union does not honor or give any consideration to that vote. It also does not honor the current desires expressed by our friends in Lincoln. This is uncharted territory and requires thoughtful and reasonable consideration, as what happens next will affect our learners now and in the future. We ask that you do not make a hasty decision on this important matter. We ask that MAUSD remain a school district, and if our friends in Lincoln discover they cannot sustain themselves as a school district, MAUSD would welcome them to return. We have proven we can work together. Please don't return us to an SU that would undo any progress we have made so far." So that was Don's note. And then I just wanted to offer a few final remarks. And I think both Bailey and Don referenced this, but at our, at our board retreat in August, we talked about our openness to welcoming Lincoln back to MAUSD. We understand that this is not part of the agreement that they received from the State Board of Ed when they were allowed to withdraw, and so exactly how that would unfold is unclear to me, but I would ask the Lincoln School District to consider going back to their community and inviting a vote, as Ripken is doing, to come back to MAUSD. I want to be very clear that we do not want I want to be very clear that we do not want to be deconstructed into a supervisory union for all of the reasons that have been stated, both now and when Superintendent Reed presented to this group in June, or was it July? June. But, our Board believes, and I personally very much believe, that we as a district are stronger with all five towns together. We are open to and would encourage this opportunity to find a way forward. We've learned a lot since we began this journey toward creating a long-term sustainable plan for our district back in 2018. This work includes a rigorous study of our leadership and management practices that are likely going to result in more significant and sustained involvement of building principals and running their schools. This is one way in which we are continuing to grow and develop and progress as a supervisory district in a way that will increase opportunities for all of our students, as well as strengthen the voice of individual communities, which is important to all of us. I believe that some of the concerns that the Lincoln School District has had with returning to a supervisory district are ones that our Board, together with them, can work through. We believe that this is the option that makes the most sense for the students in all of our five towns, and I think, as was said earlier, that the State Board of Ed is in a situation where there are no good options. I would suggest that it would be great if our community could, at our local level, figure out what we think works best for us, rather than being imposed upon, and that that is something to really seriously consider as a Lincoln community. Thank you.
I think the only comments I would add, and again, we had a chance to present some of the concerns in June, and those stand, and you've heard some of those, and I've certainly heard some themes, as my colleagues have been presenting, around some of the challenges and concerns, and, you know, we probably align a lot with what Libby said around being a current supervisory district and being deconstructed into an SU and some of those concerns. One of the things that probably separates MUSD is we've actually served Lincoln for the past several decades, so we have that relationship. And when I think about the passage of Act 46 that was described earlier and that did pass in all five of our towns that were part of our SU before, there were a lot of projections made about what the outcomes of that merger would produce, financial governance, equity, et cetera, and as we've gone back and looked at some of those projections from five or six years ago, we've actually over-delivered, right? So we anticipated the rate of increase in taxes would be less as a merged district than as a supervisory union. Our analysis shows that we actually came in under what the projection was. When I think about, for me, that a lot of folks hung on to the financial benefits of merging under Act 46, and there are some aspects of that. For me, the driving force is really about equity and outcomes and opportunities for students. When I think about how far we've come in just the four years that we've been a merged district, in terms of the equity and opportunities for students in all five of our elementary schools that feed Mount Abraham here, a lot of that is at risk. The financial benefits are at risk, but for me, even more importantly, the equity benefits that we are realizing through lots of hard work and changing practices and changing behaviors in an organization are at risk if we're deconstructed and we now have two Boards hopefully making consistent decisions, but maybe not. Historically, we would say not. For years, we would hear teachers at the middle high school saying how they can tell which school a student came from without knowing what town they're from. We don't hear that anymore. I think that's an indication of the equity that we're providing our students that we didn't have before, not through anyone's fault, except through multiple groups with authority to make their own decisions absent of what's happening somewhere else. And the role of central office to try and kind of herd that in a common direction, sometimes successfully, sometimes not. For me, the risk, the greatest risk, is around that equity for students. We will lose a lot if we are deconstructed into an SU. Others share a concern about what's to stop other towns from wanting to do the same thing if that happens, if they wanted to have their autonomy back, all those things that so many people did value when we were a supervisory union. What seems apparent to me is perhaps the driving force behind the interest in exiting is the fear of school closure. It's an understandable fear. Our community schools are really valuable and a really important part of each of our communities. Everyone, so I've met with each of our select Boards to talk about consolidation, et cetera. Every one of our towns thinks very, very highly of their local community elementary school. When I think about that notion of school closure, that seems to be the main thing that's kind of hanging out there. When I think about what we've been able to deliver on as a unified district. The Mount Abraham Unified School District Board has been really clear about its commitment to not closing or repurposing elementary schools. It's gone above and beyond the Articles of Agreement that say a town has to vote on that to define what repurposing is and say that it wouldn't do significant repurposing without a vote of the community as well. I recognize there's additional concern about a merger and that the merger Articles of Agreement don't offer the same level of protection that exists in MUSD currently. That is a true statement. I would argue, though, that a two-thirds majority of the Board of a merged district, Addison-Northwest School District, to prompt a warrant of vote, which then needs a two-thirds majority of the electorate of that district to close a school, is an incredibly high bar and itself offers a great deal of protection to a community school being closed. And along those lines, I would echo what Krista was saying. If it didn't mean changing our governance structure, which we're finding is really effective in providing equity and outcomes for students at a cost that's affordable to our communities, we could essentially keep Lincoln as a member town in our unified district, we would welcome that opportunity. Lincoln as a district on their own that deconstructs us into an SU, I think the risk is too great.
Let me play devil's advocate a little bit, because intellectually, two-thirds majority sounds, that sounds like a very high bar, but I think what we've been hearing is that what folks want is they want a simple majority, 50.1% in their local community, and at-large, district-wide, even if it was 99.9%, that's just not going to cut it. It's all about having that vote within the community. And is there, do you foresee any sort of movement on that?
I'll just speak based on my observations and participation with the merger study committee. There are other members of the committee here that may see it differently. This is a topic that has been discussed for hours and hours at the merger study table committee, recognizing that this is a key point of contention. When Starksboro was undergoing its withdrawal process, it was a key point of contention, and it has been for Lincoln. And after going around and around and really seeing it genuinely from multiple perspectives, where they landed was, this was the best compromise from a Board having sole authority to close a school and a town having sole authority to close a school, that a pretty strong case would need to be made for a school to close, for this threshold to be met.
We cannot, should not project what might happen with your vote. So let me ask this question. Am I understanding that MUSD in its configuration would entertain a conversation with Lincoln about returning to the supervisory district with the conditions that limit the supervisory district from closing their school without approval of the town's voters?
You were a little choppy there. If you want to try that again.
What I said is, we cannot, should not get my upcoming voter vote. So let me ask this question. Am I understanding that MUSD in its current configuration would entertain a conversation with Lincoln about returning to the supervisory district with conditions that limit the SD from closing their school without approval of the town's voters? And if it's still garbage, I can put it in the questions in chat.
If I can restate what I think I heard, I think the question is, there's been discussion, it's very clear that you would welcome and would love for Lincoln to come back into your district. I think Dr. Colby's question is, would you be equally welcoming with that condition that they have maintained this ability to have a local vote on any future school closure questions? Did I, do I have that right, Tammy?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions in chat. Once we read it.
I'll speak out of place first. There's already in the articles that would require a district vote to change that, as MUSD stands today. But as Patrick had mentioned, with the merger question under consideration, there was a lot of debate, and as adamant as Lincoln and Starksboro have been about a town vote, which by the way is questionable if that's inconsistent with the one-person-one vote of the district, the Virgin's district is as adamantly opposed to changing their current structure as it's a Board decision. So that is where we landed with that compromise, if you will. The short answer, I think, is with the MUSD Articles Agreement today, that protection stays there as long as a court would hold it up, and then it would be up to the district as a whole to make a decision whether to merge with Addison-Northwest or not, and that would ultimately change that condition.
Go ahead.
I would just say it's a lot like, a lot of the testimony that we heard today, is that if one town is able to do that, it can essentially hold what's available to the rest of the district hostage.
Lyle, did you have a question?
Help me understand, Oliver, what the State Board of Education could do today, given the procedures we need to follow to make that happen, what they're requesting.
There's really nothing we can do. It's, I think the message we're hearing is that Mount Abe would welcome, love for Lincoln to come back, and when we bring Lincoln back up here, I think there's a question, all we can do is encourage, but, you know, much as like we did with Ripton and ACSD last year, you know, and I think somebody spoke to this earlier, you know, the ideals, what we're talking about, all the options, they're terrible options, right? The ideal solution is the one that can be developed locally here on the ground, right? And that's why we encouraged last year and would welcome the opportunity for that to develop. But we can't, we don't, we lack the statutory tools to find, you know, a better solution than the options that we have today, so our hands are tied.
I just wanted to make sure that I had friends that have been around here before, maybe about the town voting or amendment.
I was just, thank you, Kim. Patrick, when you were describing, I think your response to Oliver was, you know, this question had been discussed many, many hours.
Can you speak up?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just following up on the thread of the conversation, Patrick had responded, I think, to Oliver, saying, you know, this issue had been discussed, and this is about the merger with Addison-Northwest and Mount Abe. And I, your response sort of, I understand how that would be viewed in the context of the merger conversation of Articles of Agreement. Did people discuss that in terms of why we're here today, that failure to reach an accommodation on that issue could result in the State Board deconstructing a school district or a supervisory district? Because I mean, we've heard a lot of testimony, and yours in particular stuck with me, about the advantages of an SU versus an SD. It seems like the logic being promoted is that the State Board will know that and acknowledge that, but really, I think why we're here today is that the failure to reach that local accommodation has put us to this point where we have to choose one of these options.
And again, I would encourage others to jump in. My recollection is, we talked that there, sadly, there wasn't one other variable we needed to talk through that could sort of be a result of decisions that were made. So we talked through multiple variables. One of those was the potential deconstruction of MUSD. At the time, it seemed, in particular, if Starksboro was successful in withdrawing and Lincoln had already withdrawn, that seemed even more so to point in that direction. So, and at the time, Starksboro was still in that process. So we very much talked about that as a potential outcome of not being able to figure out something else that everybody would be happy with. And even including that conversation where the merger study committee landed was, this is the right compromise. It's a proper level of kind of a standard to make a decision about closing a school, and it's not exactly what necessarily Addison-Northwest might want, it's not exactly what Lincoln or Starksboro, even MUSD might want. So it felt like in terms of being able to advance a merger conversation, decision that that might be the...
But to my point, it also puts you at risk. The very thing you're trying to advance is now at greater risk.
So I might also add, with the recent Starksboro vote, the threat or the consideration, maybe that's a better word, of being deconstructed into a supervisory union played out pretty heavily in that conversation, enough so that not all the towns voted to allow Starksboro to be released with the almost certainty that MUSD would be deconstructed. So there are now people out there that have heard that point of view, if you will, voted in a particular way, and now we're still discussing whether to deconstruct or not, which is unfortunate for those people that went through that process a month ago.
Yes.
And I do see other options. I know that other districts have the capacity to educate the children from Lincoln, and I see, you know, Item J on the agenda here, which also seems like a path forward for, that lines up, if you read, when I read those, lined up well with what I'm hearing.
No, definitely not. And this is a myth I want to dispel right now.
Right, that's just...
Okay. There is a myth out there that, because I've heard it, and I see we have some folks from Ripton out there, want to be super clear, becoming, and what you're speaking about is becoming an independent school, okay, does not solve this challenge, because an independent school is just that, it's an independent school. There still needs to be a school district, and that school district either needs to be designated as a supervisory district or be assigned to a supervisory union, and that school district has all the legal responsibilities of educating those students, whether it's operating a school, or if they don't operate a school, tuitioning them to an independent school. So Ripton, Lincoln, they could close down their public school, open up an independent school, but the Lincoln School District and the Ripton School District still exist, they still have all of the legal responsibilities and obligations to provide special education services, to ensure that the tuition is paid, to manage a budget, none of that goes away. So anybody who's floating that as a magic wand here, please, we have to stop this. This is really dangerous misinformation that's been floating around, and it really troubles me because it doesn't actually solve the problem.
I appreciate that, because I was wondering myself, so thank you.
So if there are other options, other solutions out there that we've, you know, we took Lincoln's letter to heart, we reached out to everybody that Lincoln identified, and then we went a step further and, you know, reached out to Rutland Northeast, given their proximity. We're looking, we're looking for a solution here because we're cognizant of the fact that there aren't any great options. Kim?
So I have a question, because I'm trying to figure out how a unified school district can warrant a vote for only one of its towns, and having that be a binding vote for the taxpayers of the entire school district. As I understand it, a school district is a municipality of those unified towns, so how is it even legal to warrant a vote for a single town?
That's the question I think Kevin was raising before, about one town having authority to make the, to vote on its school's vote.
So, Kim, I think it's a fair question, but we're going a little outside the lines, and I'm conscious of time, so I want to keep us...
Yeah, so I think my own... So I think my only other thing to note is that, and it's related to the MAUSD and Addison-Northwest merger, Lincoln is advisable. And as I understand it, the Lincoln School Board has refused to warn the vote to allow their community members to have a vote in that unification decision. So I think maybe to Lyle's question is if the School Board or whatever percent of the electorate called for a warning of that vote, that is the only way out and back into a unified district if that were to pass broadly. Am I getting, somebody please check me on that, Donna, or anyone else who may know if I'm getting that right? So the one thing that could have happened, Lincoln School Board has refused to warn the vote for.
There's a timing issue, isn't there?
There are still a few, I think that that warning, there's a few days left for that warning to go out and meet the statutory time. So it hasn't passed, but it's...
But it hasn't happened yet, as we know, and that is the only avenue for the question, I think, that Lyle asked earlier. If I'm, I just want to make sure I'm getting that right.
But that presupposes that the, the other towns all vote in the front.
Right, no, of course, I'm just suggesting it's the only avenue. We don't have tools, trying to point out the avenues.
I think there is another avenue, but I don't think it's the, as you were saying before, I don't think it's the State Board's avenue, it's the local avenue.
Yeah.
Go back to a merger study or something.
The best resolution here is compromise at the local level. And the minute, you know, once those options, once those conversations have been exhausted, then it becomes a decision that the State Board needs to make, and the State Board has no good options. So whatever the State Board does, someone is going to be upset with the Board. Final point, and I do want to provide Lincoln an opportunity, or actually, I want to hear from Donna, and then provide Lincoln an opportunity to be heard again.
Yeah, sure, I guess I would just say that, you know, whether the vote is binding or not, I think it just sort of illustrates the idea that four towns could potentially be opposed, imposed upon by the consequences intended or not of a withdrawal. And, you know, to Secretary French's question or point about the thing we're trying to sustain and build may not be achieved because of a disagreement around language allowing school closure, you know, I think things have unfolded, and I'm not on the merger study committee, so I can't speak to that specific timeline, but things have just sort of unfolded and snowballed so quickly to the point that our, you know, the folks that voted back in March to allow Lincoln to withdraw had no idea, and were in fact assured repeatedly by the representatives from Lincoln that there would be no negative consequences. So I guess I would just, you know, my final remark would be a plea to not make punitive the actions of one community on the remaining four.
Oh, Lyle? Yep, yep.
One of the things I'm really happy that I've, I've heard today, I think we've all heard, is that you're all talking about quality and equity, and then it comes down to finance. You're talking about the kids, and what are the kids going to get? So I want to thank you for that. That's what makes our education system here special. One of my question, I guess my question is, and maybe it's a legal question, which is, what if we don't make a decision today, and could there be a local solution? Could they then go themselves to create a local solution to bring back to us? I don't know the answer to that, but I'm hearing maybe.
I think it's a fair question. As I stated, you know, earlier, it's, it's obvious that, you know, there's a lot of missing information, and we're, I'm looking around at the Board, I'm not sure I'm hearing anybody on the Board signaling that we want to make a decision today. I think we, we need some time to reflect on what we've heard. Sounds like there's a lot more research to be done by, by folks, right? And perhaps that would provide some space for the local community to try to find a better option locally, a solution out of this quagmire. So does that answer your question, Lyle?
I would, if I were them, I'd want to know, what do you want me to do now?
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's going back to their attorney and coming up with, you need to go to Lincoln, and you need to ask them to warn a vote, I'm just making this up, I have no idea if that's anything that would need to happen. What could that be?
And I think part of it is, is there, there are some other considerations that need to play out, right? So we've got a vote tomorrow in Ripton, so need to see how that plays out. That affects the local landscape, and then there's the vote on the super merger, and how those things play out has as much bearing on what might develop locally as it does on the State Board. So I think, I would suggest, I think, need to let some of that ground settle first.
So it's okay for us to wait a while?
I, I think we, I think we need, I mean, I'm looking around here, I, does anybody...
I don't have enough information to make a decision today. I mean, there's a lot of, like, specific information about, you know, one supervisory union versus another. We don't have the information of what that impact would be, at least for me, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a decision without that information.
And I'm worried that any decision we might make today could put our thumb on a scale of some of these local votes, that's another, that's another consideration, so...
And I will say too, I'm really heartened by the, the tone of your presentation and the idea of welcoming Lincoln back to the table to see if there are solutions that you guys can brainstorm together with Lincoln that we can't. And, you know, I, I think in a negotiation, the right answer is going to be the one that everyone agrees on, right? And you guys have a lot more flexibility there than we do, and so I think if something could come about, I think we would welcome that, as the State Board, to, you know, be presented with something that kind of works for the people on the ground and, you know, really promotes the education of the students. So I would really encourage Lincoln to, you know, come back to the table and work with you guys.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Donna, are you still with us? Wonderful. So I'm hoping you could provide some quick analysis on a, on a few questions, and then we'll hear from Lincoln again. So the first is on the issue of, because I, I believe there was a change in the law this year on SU representation, and there are some new tools in the toolbox with respect to SU representation, because I know that was a concern that we've heard from a number of SUs. So I'm hoping you could just provide us with the Cliff Notes version of what has changed.
Well, I want to tell you what it, what it is, and then how, am I really echoing a lot?
No, no, you're good.
Okay, because I'm echoing a lot today. Current law is that 260, in 266, is that if a school district operates a, a school, then it automatically has three members that sit on the supervisory union board. It doesn't matter the size, regardless of the size, it has three, three members. 261 subsection D says that if a supervisory union board votes to do so, it can come to the State Board and ask for a waiver of a number of different, of, number of different default situations for how they operate, how the supervisory union board operates. One of those being how many school district members are appointed to the supervisory union board. What the legislature did this year in Act 176, when it was amending the, all of the union school district statutes, is is that it included, and it's the new 719 subsection C, if anybody wants to look it up, it says that if a supervisory union includes a unified union school district, and that does, that means it doesn't have to operate all those grades, but it's responsible for all those grades, pre-K through 12. So if a supervisory union is a, in, then the matter of how many members sit on the SU board can come up before the State Board, either on the State Board's own initiative, or the SU Board's initiative, or any one of the district's initiatives within the SU. So it's expanding how it can come to you, if there is a unified union school district in the SU.
Okay. So just to...
So for example, in, in, in central Vermont, I think it is the, the Northfield situation, when they were talking about Northfield and, and Williamstown versus Orange and Washington, you could take that up on your own if you chose to. Either one of the district boards could vote and come to you with it, or the SU as a board, whole board could come to you and ask you to look at that.
Okay. Great, thank you. All righty, if we could have folks from Lincoln rejoin us? And I, I guess I'd like to start with, you know, just back to the discussion we just had with, with Mount Abe. Is there, is there willingness on the part of Lincoln to consider a way to, you know, rejoin the Mount Abe district as, as a way to find a, a good local solution here?
We've not been contacted or seen any options that would desire, create a desire for us to have that happen, because again, we are very committed to keeping our school open. And right now, the, the terms of Mount Abe's incorporation and the terms for the, the potential merger do not, you know, there's a moratorium on how long a school can stay open before the decision can be taken out of the town's hands. And right now, that's the main obstacle. I, I think that there is goodwill on behalf of Mount Abe, and I appreciate that. I think there's some fractious history that would also have to be worked through to rebuild trust, and, you know, some of the governance issues that I think were referred to, that there will be some changes in, in governance and things like that. So I, I, you know, never say never, but there are, there would be conversations that had to be had to see if, again, just we were able to keep our school open.
So I, I hope, and I, I hope you're going to appreciate that if there was, if there was a marriage to be made out there that made everybody happy, our decision would be relatively straightforward. And our first priority is to try to come up with a solution that makes everybody happy. And I, I think you can appreciate that clearly is not before us. And the options that we have, as I see them, are to deconstruct a local supervisory district into a multi-district SU. We've heard testimony today that is seen to be highly undesirable for, from the perspective of those folks. The other option is sort of contingent on what happens with, with Ripton and their vote, if, if they choose not to return to ACSD. Both Ripton and Lincoln have previously expressed interest in forming a joint SU, and I, I think it should be clear that, you know, the Board hasn't taken any action to take that off the table as an option. I'm looking around at my colleagues here, I don't, I don't think anybody feels like we've, we've taken that off the table. So that, that's an option. The other option is to assign Lincoln to a multi-district SU. You've presented a number of possibilities, including a preference. The State Board has added an SU to the mix, just based on proximity, but in all of those cases, we have heard, you know, testimony clearly indicating opposition to that. And then the, the final option is to assign, or excuse me, to designate the Lincoln School District as a supervisory district. And contrary to what we heard before, the Board has not made any findings relative to Lincoln's ability to, to be a supervisory district. That, so that remains as an open option, I believe, right? So that's sort of, I just want to lay the, the landscape and turn it over to other Board members for questions.
May I comment on that first, or?
Yes, yes, yes.
So I just want to go through, you know, what you said in the, the Mount Abe deconstruction into a supervisory district, and I'm unclear what we're talking about, because in the, the attachment for the, to the agenda, the Mount Abe deconstruction looked like it was deconstructing Mount Abe back into five different districts.
No, 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 no.
Okay, okay.
And to, so there would be Mount Abe as a district?
Yes, okay.
Lincoln as a district, and one SU.
Right, okay. And the, you know, I would, I would question some of the assumptions, for example, I know that a supervisory union can still negotiate shared staff among districts, so that the, the current sharing of staff would, would not be an issue. And the, we would be talking about the Lincoln, only the Lincoln Community School, which is 6% of the MAUSD population. So the, the challenges and the disruption of deconstructing Mount Abe and the damage it would cause to, to students, I think, is worth further consideration. With regard to potentially going back with Ripton, again, they would have to want that. I think that we may not have made a determination, but your response to their preparedness report was very strong, and it would not, I think, all of us who are considering that need to take that seriously. So you have added valuable information to that possibility, about that possibility. You say you have not made a determination that Lincoln cannot be its own supervisory district, but we have made a determination that we're unable to be our own supervisory district, so that would feel very contradictory to what, what needs to happen, which is to assure that we have access to supervisory union services. And then I certainly understand all of the challenges that the many districts supervisory unions made, and I just want to clarify that the letter that you sent to them from, that from Lincoln was, was not a letter for them, it was a letter that we sent to you, and that, that list included districts that we were thinking of reaching out to just for purchase services, because we had been looking at purchase services as an option. So, you know, I apologize to, to districts who may have been contacted that we ultimately decided not to contact, and that the intention was really to talk about purchase services, but I still appreciate everybody who came and, and who testified today. The, the two main things I heard, and again, every district was different, but the inefficiency of providing services with a large geographic different, distance, and specifically transportation and food and, you know, teachers, special ed teachers coming. And I, I just want to reiterate what I said in my initial testimony. Lincoln is fully prepared to take on responsibilities for managing those aspects of the program if they cause inefficiencies in delivery for, for the supervisory union, or if they cause, you know, the, the need for the supervisory union to, to hire more staff. So, you know, our commitment is to making it work wherever, and one of the options in section 261 is that districts can provide these services themselves. Finally, I just want to, I think there's one more point here. Oh, I just wanted to clarify that the shift with regard to our interest in being with Mount Abe is, you know, is again precipitated by a shift in the reality of the situation. And we've just been trying to focus, deal with what our realities are. And in our September 1 letter, we indicated our preferences, and so Mount Abe was not the top preference, but we did put it there as a potential. And in this current presentation, where we're looking at what really is viable for Lincoln for Lincoln School District to receive services, there is no way to ignore the fact that Mount Abe has many benefits over the other school district, the other supervisory unions we've been talking about because of geography, because of shared systems, because of being part of the fabric of the culture and the teacher relationship. So I just want to be clear that our shifts have taken place based on the reality that we, as it evolves for us.
I think it would be helpful, and I appreciate your responses, that's very helpful. What would be helpful at this stage is, because we are entering budget season and there are a lot of folks here today with us, is it would be helpful if you could sort of narrow your focus at this point? I mean, do you feel, based on the testimony that you've heard, that you could sort of dismiss options off the table and perhaps say, hey, these are realistically, these are the, because I think I'm hearing from you, you now see Mount Abe as the preferred option, maybe still White River, but I'm not really, so if you can just kind of summarize where your preferences are right now.
Well, I think just to reflect back on what Jennifer said. I mean, we don't have full information because we haven't been able to really sit down and look at the details of the budgets and of how the programs are run. And that that's really what's required. And I reflect back to the commentary from Grand Isle that ideally you come and you've already figured out how that's going to work. And we have not had access to the people and the information that we need to figure out how that's going to work. So I, you know, in terms of another SU, yes, closer geography is better. That would be a priority. So that puts CVSU and White River Valley SU on the table. And then Mount Abe obviously has the geography and other benefits, but there is not a way to rejoin that district and still be assured we can keep our school open. And if the merger happens, there is no way to be part of that to assure we can keep our school open. So I'm not able to, we're not able to prioritize that.
So what I'm hearing clearly, though, is you need more time.
We are willing to, all of those are on the table as viable options that will work out one way or another, we believe.
You need time to get the information.
We also need access. And I'm not sure we will get the access to the other supervisory unions, given their, you know, their concerns.
So I've got, I guess, an observation that your school district will need to warn a vote in March. I'm pretty sure I'm right on that timing based on what we were required to vote in May. So I just put that out there as a big lift for any district because it's prime budget season right now, I'm well aware. The other question I have that I haven't heard answered is why haven't you warned the vote for Lincoln to participate, to have a voice in the merger of Addison Northwest and Mount Abe Unified Union School District? Why wouldn't Lincoln voters get a voice in that?
Because Lincoln voters actually don't have a right to have a voice in that. We have been removed from Mount Abe Unified School District. As an advisable district, you have a right to vote. And your vote is only a vote on whether you want to join if the other towns vote for the merger to go forward. We do not have a voice in the merger happening itself.
But you would, you're foregoing all voice. So if it goes forward, I'm just, I cannot understand that logic to prevent any voice in a vote.
Well, we would basically, the vote for us would be to vote to join the merger between Mount Abe and Addison Northwest as one school in that single unified district. And based on the vote just over a year ago from our town, that our priority, we want to keep the school open, and that there's continued enthusiasm for that, we would be asking the town to reverse their vote, to go into a district where we do not have the ability to keep the school open. And we would be yet even a smaller voice in a larger unified district. And so that goes basically counter to everything that allowed, that propelled Lincoln to withdraw from MAUSD.
So I guess I just would like to follow up because the not allowing the vote for that to provide information from your community feels much like the self-selected folks requiring a vote of the state board when there was law about to be signed by the governor that put in other protections and options. And it was not something that left open a door for the broader community. And so I'm just, again, I'm wondering what the, either the fear is or the rationale for not creating the opportunity for your community members to vote. It's just more information, it's more data. And I'm not quite sure the fear and why a school board responsible, because when these votes took place, what has been learned since then is that there's not a plan for ensuring superintendency services. That wasn't required of the votes that were taken when you did them last year or whenever they were. There's no plan for this school district, now, you know, a school district, to have a plan to ensure superintendency services, all those LEA services required. And I'm not even sure that I understand where it would be legal to say, we're going to do our own this or that if you're part of an SU. So I guess I am really just trying to understand how a school board could stand in the way of that vote.
Well, if the town wants to vote, they can come with a petition of ten percent, signatures of 10% of the town. We have explained this in, you know, in public fora, and we can explain it again. And I think as we come up on the vote, we probably should so that people understand why we're not voting. And again, we are using our best judgment of why the residents of Lincoln voted to leave MAUSD. And knowing what we know about the residents of Lincoln now, it requires work to be done by the clerk's office, it requires work to be done by us, and it is counter to the mandate we were given by the town. So that is our, that's our explanation of why we did it. And we've invited people to come to our board meetings to, you know, discuss it. And, but that's our explanation. And there was another part of your question.
I guess I'm just struck that even as a school district, and again, because of when we took the vote, the only tools we have are the same tools we had when we made Ripton their own supervisory district. So I don't know what the answer will be ultimately. But, you know, all of this, sort of deconstructing SDs, I don't think is limited to, I don't think that consideration is limited to just MAUSD. I think we heard from a lot of, because there was outreach to some others that were SDs. The assignment to SUs, the challenges that presents. And I think for the tools available to us, while you may not feel you are able to provide the services that would be necessary as your own supervisory district, it remains on our slate of options. And with the only same tools that we had available when we had an assignment of Ripton as their own supervisory district. So I know we've all learned a lot since then, but to be clear, sort of the facts of the matter are no different. As a matter of fact, you guys are bigger.
Board members, questions? Yep, no, go, no apologies.
A bouquet of olive branches that was handed out. And I'm wondering if there is any legal option that would allow the two of them to get together, and I'm just making this up, with a mediator of some kind to talk through what it is that they would like. I'm hearing, we don't want to close, period. That's what I'm hearing. And if they got together with someone who could then talk about how, what would that need to look like? Is that a worthless conversation because there's no legal way to bring them back in to where they were before, or not?
There is a legal way, but I think this merger vote needs to play out first. I think that that's.
I don't disagree.
Right, that needs, so that needs to happen first. And then, because they need to know who they're talking to at that point, right? Are they talking to MA, if the vote fails, then the conversation's with MAUSD. If the vote passes, it's with the newly merged district. But I think it's a fair question.
I'm just asking, if I were them sitting here and if I was MAUSD sitting down there, I'd want to know, what are you asking us to do right now? And we're saying, wait until the vote of Ripton.
And the supermerger.
Wait for the supermerger vote. And then let's come back and talk about the potential for whatever that means at the end of the day. And it might mean get back together and get somebody to help you mediate that, depending on how all these things came out. I'm just trying to get something in order here because in my head, it's linear. What am I doing tomorrow? What am I doing the next day?
Well, and we can just add to that. I think one thing I might have is I would not want to just wait to have a conversation on mediation until all the votes are done. Because there would not be time to sort of reconcile, still have to see a viable option for next school. I almost feel like we need to be operating on parallel paths.
I was just going to say, like, have a big plan with contingencies of the state. If I were Lincoln, I would be, you know, tracking down all of the information that we have highlighted as missing today. Because information is power, and that's going to help you identify what really is your best solution. We don't have that information. So I wouldn't wait for votes to happen. I think you really start, need to start cultivating these relationships with supervisory unions and figure out, you know, what are your most viable options? And I think the other thing that's really important for you guys to confront is the possible reality that I know you want to keep your school open. But it's a certain point, and again, I couldn't begin to guess when that might be, there might be a tipping point when your tax rate gets so high because you have such little control over your budget, that your voters might choose to close your school. And I don't know if you've had that difficult conversation, but that seems to me like that would be important for you guys to know as well.
So I think what you're hearing from the board, oh, sorry, Kim, go ahead.
I was just going to say, specifically, that Title I analysis was a new area of information that'll be, I think, really important. I think important to note is that if you allow your community to vote, they protect the school from closure for four years. So what I understand, and please, somebody in the community is letting me know, I'm pretty sure that the, I'll call it a supermerger, I don't know that that's the most, I don't know how that feels, but the ANWSU and MAUSD vote provides protection for four years from school closure. There is a study commissioned, and the state is doing a two-year moratorium on closure with study. I think probably Secretary French or somebody is supposed to sort of look at, somebody's supposed to be looking at what's, what guardrails or parameters might be put around school closures at the statewide level to inform conversations as they come up. And, you know, certainly Jennifer's comments are important. So by not warning the vote for your community, they aren't part of those conversations that protect them minimally for four years and then protect them by supermajority votes in two ways after that. So I guess I'm, I guess, again, I just, that is one thing that legally you could do that isn't happening. Because I think all these other things are wonderful ideas. I think they will require, and Donna, you can certainly let us know if we're not thinking of something, sounds like they require some, either sort of legislative action or a merger study committee or something that was in Chapter 11 about unified districts or something to that effect.
So I think, just to summarize what I think you're hearing from the board is, we don't have all the information. I think we're hearing from you that you don't have all the information, and we all need more time. But we're also, you know, we're in a time crunch here, right? Because July 1st isn't that far off, and, you know, town meetings in March, and budgets need to go out to print in January. So there's not a lot of time to deal with this. We have very little control over that timeline. But I think what you're hearing is real desire for the board for the local community to find a local solution. So to Jennifer's point, you know, and Dr. Colby's point, you know, try to get those conversations going now. Look at all the options, right? So conversation with, you know, the merger study committee with Mount Abe about, you know, what could be done, what's in the realm of possibility. That needs to be a conversation that needs to go on. The second thing is continued research into these various SU options, you know, that you've identified, and hopefully today has helped sort of narrow that focus. So that's the second thing. And then the third thing I want to suggest to the board that in parallel, we might ask the agency, the secretary, to do some research and perhaps come back in November with a recommendation, much as we did with Ripton.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, the topic of not having informations come up. Having done a couple of these myself, pull the annual reports of the other districts. You don't have to do projections on next year. You need to create a model based on the structure that exists right now. And that'll help you eliminate some options.
You've actually done that, but I don't think that, I think it's a bit of a fear.
I mean, I heard fear. I heard, you know, a lot of assumptions about inefficiencies that, and every SU does it differently, and we can't counter those assumptions.
Let me push back on you. No, I'm going to push back on you because we heard real numbers, and your number one preference in your September 1 letter was White River Junction. And we heard a number of $420,000 in incremental expense. Very real number and big.
I think that part of it's hard to do, you know, like projecting what additional costs would be there. But, you know, in the interest of trying to eliminate pieces, if you took some of those SU models that exist and how they do their assessments, plug in your ADM, plug in, you know, basic idea, then you might be able to eliminate a few options as being really undesirable, you know. And I'd be interested in particular with Central Vermont and White River, you know, because they're different in terms of the number of districts. And the number of districts has some implications for how the SU assessments are configured. But to your other question, yeah, the agency, we're not going to be in a position to do this kind of research for you, which is why I led on that. But we certainly would, based on the information we have, provide a recommendation. Because I think the thing that's wearing on me, secretary, is time is of the essence. And, you know, certainly based on the information we have, we'd be able to, I'd formulate a recommendation for you.
Board members, is everybody supportive of seeking that recommendation? You're seeing that, okay. I think that would be really helpful.
Can you give us a timeframe for when you'd like to revisit this? Because time is of the essence for us. And I think that if you're actually considering making us our own supervisory district, that ship has probably already sailed in terms of timing.
I think everyone in this room that's in the mix needs to be planning for contingencies. And that's the reality, unfortunately. We did not choose this timeline, to be blunt. This was chosen by Lincoln, not by the state board, not by anybody else. So we are all now collectively operating on a timeline that was set by Lincoln. With advice and counsel.
And we stand by that, under the, given the circumstances, and we do stand by that we made the correct choice, even though I know it's been very disconcerting for everybody. And I think that's history, and we just need to deal with where we are now and how Lincoln School Kids and the school receive the services. School kids and the school receive the services that they are required and, and deserve. So the, I feel like we have presented, there are options and we will be happy to bring back as much more information as we can.
So I, I think everybody needs to be planning for contingencies because whether we like it or not, this unfortunately will be a decision later than we all would have, would like. Once, I would say minimally, the board won't be in a position to make a decision until it has actually received and had the opportunity to review the recommendation from the secretary. So I think once we have that recommendation, that, that's sort of our, you know, sort of a minimum requirement. And then hopefully we'll have more information from you. But, you know, again, I just want to observe that this, the, this, there's been a lot of shifting around here. You know, starting in May, there were representations made by representatives from Lincoln and legal counsel. And I recall quite specifically probing on this issue of, are you going to come back and...
I agree.
And, and ask us to make a forcible assignment? Because I felt the story was starting to change a little bit there. And, and I recall Counselor McLean saying, "No, no, there's, there's no different story." And, no, 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 let me finish.
You said that twice today.
No, let me finish. This is, this is our, this is, this is, excuse me, sir, this is our meeting. I will give you an opportunity to respond when I'm done. Thank you. We were told that this, there was no different story. We probed further and we heard a very direct response from Mr. Forlenza, I believe, that the plan was a supervisory union with, with Ripton. So September 1st, we received a letter identified White River as, as a, as a new option. And then now today, we're hearing another option. So I just, we're, the, things are shifting around a lot. There's a lot of missing information. We're going to need some time here and it's, it's a, it's a stressful, challenging situation because we are in the mid, beginnings of budget cycle. We have very limited time. And at the end of the day, this is all about the students and, and how they're impacted. And it's really unfortunate that we're in this position that we're in. Counselor McLean, you may now speak.
So my recollection, and it's not perfect, but that doesn't matter because it's on video, our May 18th meeting in front of the SBE. And you did ask about whether we would come back and ask for unilateral assignment. And what you said at that time is, are you saying that you're coming to come back and ask for unilateral assignment? And both in our written correspondence and that day, we were very clear. SU assignability was not relevant to the board's withdrawal, approval of the withdrawal in MAC. And so the point we were making there, and I think it's still a very true point, which is that the SBE should not be conditioning our withdrawal based on a clear plan for an SU assignment or how to successfully provide SU services. And that's still true today. You know, one of the things that is, is, has been lost in a lot of this discussion is that the legislature actually reaffirmed schools' ability to withdraw from unified districts in the most recent legislative amendments. And so, you know, with all due respect to everybody that wants to consolidate schools and potentially close small schools, the legislature's intent is really clear, which is that notwithstanding your recommendation, for example, with Ripton, that it will, will, will not work. They have a statutory right to withdraw anyway, even without the SBE's approval. And, and so, under the law, withdrawal and SU services, they're different things. Towns have the right to withdraw. Schools have the right to keep their small schools open until the legislature changes that, which, you know, is, is also possible, I suppose. But where we are right now is that the legislature has said very clearly, towns can withdraw and they can withdraw from these schools that want to merge and consolidate governance structure. And if the SBE vehemently disagrees, which is the case in Ripton, they can still go ahead and do it. And then we still have 261, which still requires all students to be assigned to an SU and for all those students to be, have available services. So, you know, you have to reconcile those two things as well. And, and I just want to clarify, again, we did not promise, we did, we would not come back and ask for an SU assignment, nor is it relevant to whether we had a right to withdraw in MAC.
Yeah, the question wasn't about the right to withdraw. That, that's not in, in question. There were representations made about commitment to a plan to an SU and it was pretty specific by more, Mr. Forlenza. I have, I actually rolled back the tape, so I, I'm quite clear on that point.
I'll agree with you on that. Without a doubt, Lincoln was very certain that at that time, given Ripton's positioning and Lincoln's positioning, that that was a potentially viable option and, and would have been even more viable had Starksborough been able to withdraw from the MAUSD as well. But that, that, those, those are not the facts we have now. So things are shifting, not just at the blame of Lincoln, though. Things are shifting all over the MAUSD and as you guys well know, in other places too. So...
Just all to say that we clearly need more time. Would you agree?
I, I agree with, with Chair Oldham that time is...
I saw, I saw your, your head shaking before, shaking no, what I...
Time is of the essence for Lincoln and I think it's also of the essence for all of us who are interested in making sure that the statutory mandate, that everybody has access to SU services in Vermont, including the kids in Lincoln, that we can effectuate that come July. And I, and I, so I agree with both the secretary and, and you and, and Ms. Oldham that time is of the essence. If we don't have a decision very, very soon, I, I think, I think there's going to be a real problem under, under the statutory mandate.
So final clarification, I, because I didn't, I'm not sure we got a straight, clear answer on Ripton and, and a joint SU with Ripton. Is that, from your, from LSD's perspective, is that off the table as...
We have not, yes, we have that, things shift, right? We, we took to heart the report and the, again, the timing is an issue. I think that, you know, new circumstances could revitalize that, but as things stand today, it is off the table.
Thank you. Final one, yes?
Chair Olson.
Yes.
I'm just going to speak as a superintendent and I think I'm probably speaking on behalf of a number of superintendents. When you think about an SU's budget, because the voters do not technically vote directly on an SU budget, the SU budget has to be done well before you're warning the regular budget. The assessment needs to be in the regular budget. What this means in my case is that my SU board will potentially vote on the SU budget at its October meeting. When you say that I need to plan for contingencies and all of the superintendents that are here need to plan for contingencies, I think we're starting to talk, I'm just going to point out, and I understand, we're talking about a lot of contingencies, a lot of business office times, a lot of superintendent time. It would be nice to say, are there some of those contingencies that are on that list of superintendents that came down here today and have been a part of this that can come off that list? If I need to go back and plan contingencies to take on Lincoln, I need to start that tomorrow.
Honestly, I, in an ideal world, I'd like to be able to do that. Unfortunately, we're not in an ideal world and we are operating with a timeline that has, is not of our making.
I think as a state board, you need to be aware that we are going to waste thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands of taxpayer resources, dollars, on this exercise.
It's, it's not lost on me and i- if, if my frustration isn't visible enough, I, I don't know what else to say. We're living with the decision that was forced upon us and, and I think, I'm not going to restate the history. Sorry, Jennifer.
Well, I'm just, I'm thinking, you had mentioned that the email that you sent to the State Board of Ed that listed off all of the possible supervisory unions who showed up today, that you did not intend that list to be necessarily supervisory unions with whom you were exploring the option of joining? Did I hear you say that correctly?
I said, some of them we have reached out, said we were in the process of reaching out to some of, some of them and, you know, there are others on this list that we may potentially reach out to.
Okay.
I know where, I know where you're going and this is a question I asked before. Are there any that, you know, are you willing to take anything off the table and say that we don't see any?
Of that list? Sure.
That would be helpful. I think that...
Yes, yeah. I can, I don't have the list in front of me, but yes.
Okay. So can I go down on the list? Because I think this is, I, I, we have a very lot of, I appreciate the question.
I need to, I can't do it right now. I would need to talk to my board members. I'm not intimately knowledgeable with, with all of them. So I can go through it and give you a list tomorrow.
Okay. What, is, does that make sense? Okay.
I just want to acknowledge the frustration that we sit here with in doing our best to deal with what's handed to us for 70 some odd kids or maybe the total with, with high school, 120, and, and impacting thousands of kids, well over a thousand in, you know, in each of many individual SUs and districts. And while you have cited the responsibility of ensuring that superintendency services are available to all students, that would have been a really meaningful statement had it been considered before, before May, before April, that had been considered with the contingencies that were important to the students in your community and your taxpayers before the vote to withdraw with no plan. And it is exasperating and I appreciate Oliver's restrained frustration and leadership in trying to do our best to hear everything we can to make informed decisions. But there's a responsibility that comes with these things. And I think it, we are left to do something with not adequate tools to do it well. And we are hearing the profession of concern for all students. And it is feeling more like a concern for Lincoln students at all expense to no matter whatever other district or SU may be impacted. And I find it exasperating. And I sit here, I think all of us, and our responsibility to do this work with the best information we can for all students in Vermont. And that's our responsibility.
Chair Olson, could I, could I make a comment, please?
In, in one moment, I see there's a hand, Mr....
Kenar.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Olson. So I, I heard Chairperson Samuelson talk about getting information and I want to remind the State Board, as we're approaching budget season, I have seven budgets I'm currently preparing with one business manager, one accountant, and oh, by the way, we're completing our audit and the Agency of Ed is coming down to audit all my federal grants. So when that type of information is requested by the supervisory union, and I have six, seven boards I serve, when we say that is a heavy lift, that is an unbelievably heavy lift, when I'm also operating 10 schools, we're short-staffed and yes, we're in an endemic, but we are still short-staffed. And so what I want folks to know is this is not supervisory unions sitting on their hands and not running numbers. This is the fact that we are serving over 1,300 students in WRVSU and those 1,300 students, I'm sorry to say, are my priority right now.
Well, and I just, I want to be clear, I, I wasn't putting this responsibility at the feet of the supervisory unions. I'm actually surprised personally that this information had not been ferreted out by the Lincoln School District when they came before the board today. Like, we, we've known since May that today, there was going to be a two-hour conversation that's now, you know, almost three hours. So I personally was surprised that this information hasn't been obtained yet. So I, I don't mean to say that it's, it's, you know, the fault of the supervi-, the supervisory unions to have not provided that information. I think it's just we're all realizing now, on September 28th, that this information has not been provided.
And I will share with the State Board the numbers we ran and I'm happy to share them with Lincoln. So you'll have that information. It's been done. I just, I'm reminding the State Board, just like my colleague just stated, this is a really heavy lift in the fall. And it was not clear to me that Lincoln had chosen us as a preferential placement until the letter was shared to me by the State Board. That is how WRVSU found out.
Thank you. Dr. Colby and then Mr. Shems.
I'm just really nervous. I mean, truly, I'm shit. Considerable, the large numbers, the school board members from around the state have put into having to respond to Lincoln's request that they be considered a potential home. I mean, we just heard, you know, these individuals already taxed for time and resources and responding to Lincoln's request was a time-consuming task, including people who traveled a long way to today's meeting. You know, I think we've just got to narrow the guardrails here. And many of these school districts, these supervisory districts are not viable solutions based on geograph, geography. They can't provide special education services, for example, that in a way they're going to meet federal requirements. And it really was an unreasonable thing. I understand that Lincoln now says, "Well, this might have been purchased services." You know, when I read that information, I didn't take it that way. I took it as, this is a list of candidates. And your colleagues around the state took it that way too. And they took it to heart and they spent real time, real investment in being thoughtful about this. And so I would ask that Lincoln be thoughtful about this too, which is, we would like to seek a list of realistic candidates that might be options that you would like us to consider. And that might include Mount Ave. And we need to be serious about this enough that you are asking for numbers, these are numbers that we provide, to Chair, by Chair Samuelson's point, this is information that is on you to get and this is work that you do. It's not fair to other superintendents and other boards around the state to continue engaging in this process in this way.
Thank you, Dr. Colby. On that point, and we have other business we need to take up, could I suggest that we move on to our next item of business and perhaps in the next 30 minutes, the folks from Lincoln can develop this list and help?
I would just like to respond to Dr. Colby's comment that we were not advised what, what kind of information you wanted us to provide today. You received letters from supervisory unions which provide a lot of information. We had no part in inviting people to come here and give testimony. And again, we came to talk about what information we had. If you had wanted more specific information, we would have done our best to provide it. And so I apologize if, certainly I apologize to the, the time that superintendents spent to come here when I, it felt like their letters were very, were very clear. And I, I thank them for doing that.
So would you be able to, in the next 30 minutes, convene with your folks and come back? That would be, I think, be really helpful. So we can then move on to our next item of business and then return to this. Perfect. Let's just, yeah, I, we, I want to try to get...
I think Mr. Shems wants to say something.
Pardon me?
I think...
Let's, we'll, Attorney Shems, we'll pick you up in 30 minutes.
He has to, he has, he has an obligation. You're not going to, you're not going to let him speak?
I will let him speak, speak in 30 minutes. We are behind schedule. We have other items on the agenda. This is our meeting. This is the second time you've interrupted us and I would ask that you not do that. Thank you. So, next on our agenda is item J, which are independent school approvals. Mr. Lovett.
So we have, we have five schools or programs up for approval. We, we are going to ask the board to approve, recommendations to approve all of them. The first one is the Red Fox Community School in Montpelier. We are recommending that the board approve them to serve students in grades K through four. This will be a five-year approval that's conditioned on the requirement that the school reports to the Agency of Education within five business days, whenever... reports to the Agency of Education within five business days, whenever any changes occur in enrollment programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing, or administration during the approval period. Red Fox is actually, actually, I'm going to amend that motion to be, to say grades K through five. They have a new head, but still maintain a very strong community-based program, got very strong reviews from agency staff. And so happy to answer any more questions about Red Fox from the board.
Is the addition of Green Five reviewed? Here's a couple of times.
It was a typo.
Okay, so they've always done K5?
They've always done K5.
Okay.
Yes. Ms. Thompson. I was going to say, you're in Manchester.
That's true. Right, that's true. Another typo.
Or Dorset, I thought you were in Dorset.
Now they're in Manchester.
Okay, okay, got it.
Blame it on the secretary?
Absolutely. If it helps you move through your agenda, you can blame it on me, absolutely. That's my recommendation.
It was my typing. You waiting for a motion?
I've made the motion.
Yep.
I second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
I would just like to point out that, first of all, I really like the format of the report, which has changed because it was really clear. But also, the content of the report itself, I thought, was very nice. So, thank you.
Can I just clarify, because I'm hearing Kyle take responsibility for the typo? Are the recommendations from the Agency of Ed from the committee or from the AOE?
They're my recommendation to you, as required, but the committee vets them through to save you some work.
Got it. No, I knew the vetting happened, I just didn't know if Lyle was doing the recommendations or the AOE was doing them. Okay, got it.
It has to be me.
That's what I thought.
So what you're looking at, are they the minutes from the meetings?
Looking at the green sheet.
Yeah, this is like the packet of recommendations.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion's been made and seconded. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the approval, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand. It appears that the motion has carried unanimously, and indeed, the motion has carried unanimously. So, next.
Congratulations, Red Fox.
Okay, thank you.
The second school is Potcham School in Montpelier. We're recommending a renewal of their general independent school approval to serve students in grades six through 12 for five years. Again, this is conditioned on the requirement that the school reports to the Agency of Education within five business days, whenever any changes occur in enrollment programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing, or administration during the approval period. Potcham, as I said, serves grades six through 12. Some of those students are part-time students who are homeschoolers, who take advantage of Potcham's rigorous programming. Those credits are transferable for those part-time students. And the program has a very strong student voice in its design. Again, very strong approval from the agency staff.
A motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second it. Or Jennifer.
Okay, it's seconded by Jennifer Samuelson, any discussion?
My only question is more general, is it, is five years standard for approval? Okay. And if anything were to change, like the addendum this year, that is then a requirement for them to retain their.
All of these have the addendum.
All of these have the addendum, but if anything changes in the five years, thinking about the dynamic nature of education. If anything changes in the five years, addendums to their approval would need to happen.
And I believe the practice is, if it's a new school, it's a two years, right? Yeah.
And if it's a kindergarten, Tom?
Two years for kindergarten and two years for tutorials.
Okay, it's two years always, that was my question later, so, thank you.
So motion's made and seconded to approve the Potcham, am I pronouncing it?
Potcham.
School. Any further discussion or questions? Not seeing any, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
And those opposed, it appears that the motion has carried unanimously, the motion has indeed carried unanimously. So next up, we have Southshire Community School.
I'll make the motion that we support the secretary's recommendation that we renew general independent school approval for Southshire School in Montpelier to serve students in grades K through eight for a period of five years. Again, conditioned on the requirement that the school reports to the Agency of Education within five business days, whenever any changes occur in enrollment programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing, or administration during the approval period. Potcham is.
You mean Southshire?
Southshire, sorry. Southshire is, is an excellent school, a lot of parent voice, a lot of parent involvement is the hallmark of this school. Provides support for students with disabilities through the local LEA. Their enrollment was down, now they have a waiting list, fully enrolled, very strong sense of community. And they also have two retired special educators who are providing outside council, and outside council who provide support for the students there, social, emotional, and mental health support. Again, agency staff spoke very highly of this school.
So the motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Jefferson. Any discussion?
North Bennington, right, are they North Bennington or Montpelier?
It says, oh yeah, North Bennington, this is Montpelier here. Yeah, North Bennington, another typo, sorry.
amended.
amended.
It's the secretary's fault. It's the real secretary.
All righty. All those in favor of the approval, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Okay. And those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand. It appears that the motion has carried unanimously, and indeed, the motion has carried unanimously. So next up is Green Mountain Montessori.
Yes, Green Mountain Montessori School is a kindergarten. So I am, I'm making the motion that we accept the secretary's recommendation to renew the independent kindergarten approval to Green Mountain, Montessori School for two years, which is conditioned on the requirement that the school reports to the agency within five business days, whenever any changes occur in enrollment programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing, or administration during the approval period. This school focuses on project-based learning, is a Montessori school, very advanced in their math and literacy programs, connected to project-based learning, and been in business for a number of years. And I think their enrollment now is up to 40, which is fully enrolled.
So you've heard the motion with respect to Green Mountain Montessori School, is there a second? Seconded by Jennifer Samuelson, is there any discussion? Any questions?
And just to confirm, for K, it will always be just two years.
Jennifer.
Tom, there was an addendum, I may have missed it in the printout, but I just wanted to make sure that they actually did sign it.
Yeah, the addendum is only for schools, not kindergartens.
Oh, thank you.
All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand. Motion appears to have carried unanimously, and indeed, the motion has carried unanimously. So that now takes us to Mountainside.
Mountainside is a tutorial program. Mountainside has a residential component, but that's, that is under the auspices of DCF and AHS, and is not under Agency of Education supervision. So they have two spaces, their classroom building is in Ludlow, and agency staff visited there. Students have all morning of academics. The goal is to get students back into their home school as quickly as possible, but they do grant credit, the credit is granted by the receiving school for the work done at Mountainside. The number for students who are, who are, the enrollment is set by DCF, it was reduced during COVID, but now is back to full capacity. So I'd like to make the motion that we accept the secretary's recommendation to grant a renewal of tutorial approval for Mountainside House in Ludlow to serve a maximum of 12 male and female youth, 13 to 18 years of age, who are in need of crisis stabilization for two years, conditioned on the requirement that the school reports to the Agency of Education within five business days, whenever any changes occur in enrollment programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing, or administration during the approval period.
You've heard the motion with respect to the renewal of Mountainside, is there a second?
My turn, second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Brown. Is there any discussion, questions? Not hearing any. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Dr. Colby, I see you. All those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand. Not seeing any. It appears the motion has carried unanimously, and indeed, the motion has carried unanimously. That concludes our business with Item J, unless, Mr. Lovett, you wanted to add anything?
No, just, just a reminder that the next meeting, we will hear back from East Burke School, which we tabled, and Mount Snow Academy, who has given the committee an update on their progress towards the Aisne standards for student well-being. There'll also be maybe one or two more school approvals at the last, at the next meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. I see we have folks from Lincoln, I said 30 minutes, so we can, we're prepared to take you up now, or if you want more time? Okay, so, it's, we have another agenda item, so whatever works for you.
So yeah, exactly, quite simple. In our testimony, we referenced three, three entities, White River Valley Junction SU, Central Vermont SU, and Mount Abe Unified School District. Central Vermont.
And Mount Abe, okay. So those are the, and I note that the possibility with Lincoln is not one of those options, is that?
The possibility with Ripton?
Excuse me, with Ripton.
Not right now, no.
Okay. And just so we're clear, this is an expression of your preferences?
Yes.
That does not, just so there are no surprises?
Correct.
That is still very much an option on the table from the State Board's perspective, as well as the SD option as well. So effectively, I think, we're looking at five possible options. One is, is an assignment to the White River Valley SU, one to the Central Vermont SU, one to the Mount Abe, which effectively would be the deconstruction of Mount Abe, and I appreciate your clarification earlier, and hopefully, folks, it's clear to Mount, folks from Mount Abe, we're not suggesting deconstruction into sort of five districts. It would be Mount Abe as a district and Lincoln as a district with one SU. So that would be the third option. The fourth would be a supervisory union with Ripton noting that is not one of your preferences, but that is an option that the board will consider. And then the final one would be designation as a supervisory district. Hopefully, that's clear to everyone? Okay.
I just want to put on the record that Lincoln is not prepared to be its own supervisory district, so that is an option that is, I don't know how to describe it, it's not, we don't see it as a viable option.
So with that, Mr. Shems.
I believe that he had to leave for another board meeting.
Thought I heard him, but, okay.
He said he could come back on at six, but I don't.
Okay. I hear some shuffling around, so we'll, we'll check in again. Okay, so, anything else from Lincoln? Any other board members, any other questions from, for Lincoln? Okay.
I think I would just like to add that in participating in this part of the process that I've participated in and watching and seeing and understanding the frustration that everybody has, that Lincoln, like everybody else, is doing their best to, and that in May, we did something that was perfectly legal in withdrawing. And we have plans, and like many things that have shifted over the summer, things shifted for us. And I just want to say that there are, there seems to be sentiment from some places that we were misleading, or we are trying to be selfish, or that our intentions were, you know, we were hiding our true intentions. And I just want to express that we were faced with the situation where our school was going to be closed, and that continues to be the case, no matter what option has been presented in the Mount Abe School District, with Mount Abe and with the potential merger. And that is why we continue on this path today.
And I just want to say, the board is very cognizant and recognizes the driving force behind this withdrawal, this particular withdrawal, and also Ripton's withdrawal. It was all about concern about school closure. We understand that. And the, some of the frustration that you've heard from the board is that, you know, this is a major change in governance, is, you know, may, there are other tools that, you know, may be more appropriate to really get at the issue, which was the crux of your concern. And that's why we keep coming back to, you know, if there's a way to find a local solution here, you know, that really would be it. And also, I just want to be clear, like, we're not, the board hasn't expressed, you know, our frustration, going back to that May meeting, and I just want to be really clear, was that the legislature put a lot of time into crafting legislation that dealt specifically with Lincoln's circumstances. And among other things, it provided the opportunity for the Lincoln School District to delay operations by a year, if in a situation where, you know, things were getting more complicated, right? And this board's frustration, and this chairperson's frustration, is that in May, Lincoln, by its own actions, circumvented that law, and perfectly legal, otherwise we wouldn't have taken the action that we did. But nonetheless, was aware of that legislation and actively took steps to circumvent that. And that's, and now we find ourselves in a real-time crunch that creates a lot of frustration for everyone, and that's frustrating. And again, I go back to, you know, comment I made last, last month, and my characterization of that action, very specific, being reckless, it was, clearly, was not aimed at, it was not a commentary on the withdrawal, and that's what I took real exception to, and I feel was a misrepresentation of my comments, not by you personally, but by your attorney. And, and I just want to be clear that that. And, and I just want to be clear that, that, that was, that misrepresentation is not well-received.
And if I can add that what we were up against at that May 18th meeting is that while we were trying to withdraw from MAUSD, the merger study committee was started, my understanding, by MAUSD, and we knew that if we weren't withdrawn before that, and they made a recommendation, we would be caught up in the merger. And at that point, Addison Northwest had no interest in allowing schools to stay open, and we would have lost our opportunity to, to withdraw. So those are the circumstances that prompted our decision on May 18th, that the merger study had been superimposed on everything else that was going to possibly shut down our efforts.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that that's true, though, because the votes had already been taken, and the board was prepared to take up the matter at, at the next meeting in June, and it would have been under the, the terms of the new law, but I don't believe that that would have forestalled your merger. So I'm a little puzzled by that.
We would have still been part of Mount Abe when the merger vote happened.
I'm not quite following, yeah.
I know I voted against it, because I would have voted for it in June, because it was simply awaiting the governor's signature. And what would have been required then would have been the study and analysis for you to demonstrate your preparedness. And it was clear to me that that idea was not something you wanted to have to bring to your community, it seems. I don't, I don't want to make assumptions, but it's the only thing that was avoided, where there were other things offered to give more flexibility. And that is the very analysis that might have better informed even our decision-making now.
I do think there was misunderstanding then about that. We didn't want to take anything to our, I do think that our motivation was to leave MAUSD before we got caught up, before the merger committee made a decision, and we were still part of MAUSD, and the vote was taken when they were not interested at that time in allowing schools to stay open. And we can, I'm happy to go back and look at the time.
It doesn't honestly really matter. Just the effectiveness was to.
I just want you to understand, our intentions were not that.
Options and flexibilities and timeline.
Yep.
For the exchange, for having done an analysis that regardless of what our recommendation would have been, is required if you are running your own school district. So whether you have an SU, like, the responsibilities remain, whether you put it in a report for September, the responsibilities remain, and that is the type of analysis and information that I think would have been helpful even in this conversation.
And again, this was not, that we were talking about SU supervisory assignment.
But still, you have a responsibility for crafting your own budget as a school district.
I have a budget.
Okay. So let's, I think all that's, that can be said has been said.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So.
Will you be alerting the other school districts?
Yes, I, I, I will, I will follow up. So.
Mr. Cash had a question.
Well, we're, we're going to be on public comment here fairly soon. Okay, why don't, go ahead. Step on, step on.
Even in person. Nice to meet you in person.
So I guess we can do introductions. So Steve Cash.
It's nice to see you all in person.
Yes, I see all of you in person. Steve Cash, Chair of the Ripton School Board.
Molly Witters. Nice to see you again. Vice Chair.
So as you all know, we have a vote coming up tonight. We have a school board meeting. We need to send out a communication to our town. It sounds like, from the State Board of Education's perspective, an SU with Lincoln is still on the table. It sounds, sounds like from Lincoln's perspective, that is not on the table. I think you heard correctly. All options are, yeah, yeah. All right. I just want to convey that to our town adequately.
How are we supposed to represent that? Because we took your appraisal to heart, and since you hold the power to assign a supervisory union, we assumed that you would never assign us one.
So remember, our preparedness statement was about your school districts, was about your school district, right? And not, we weren't making, and weren't in a position to make an assessment about sort of a joint SU. Obviously, there were elements of the SU that were in your report, but our focus was on your Ripton School District's preparedness in any configuration, and we were really specific in noting that the statement of, of, of risk and unpreparedness was in any configuration, Ripton as a supervisory district, Ripton as a member of a multi-district SU, or Ripton with a new SU with Lincoln.
So when you deemed us unprepared to be an SU with Lincoln, within the context of that report?
It was, no, it was, it was, the Ripton School District was unprepared.
Right. But, but you were responding to a tremendous amount of work we did, that was all about building an SU with Lincoln, and that was the entire content of our, I know, I know there's like semantics of, of, of what you were responding to as a district, but within your report, you referenced that we were not prepared for any, any of those things. So how do we represent to our community now that, that it's on, still, we've told our community that was off the table?
We never took it off the table. We never took an SU with Lincoln off the table, and there, as you can tell today, there's still a lot of moving, moving pieces, so we have left that on the table as one of the options.
Oliver.
Yes.
Can I appreciate the confusion, if it's okay?
Yep, yep.
Because we did say that we did not see viability in that configuration. You're not wrong. We said, in any of those configurations, we don't see viability. We also had not, you know, I would just say, I'm not sure that there's anything that changes that assessment. So I don't, I don't think you're wrong in taking that we evaluated what you were proposing to us as a school district, for you as a school district, in all the configurations you offered. And you said right off the top, we can't do supervisory district ourself, and focused on that particular configuration. So that was the information we had, and we probably had more information on that than any of the other options, and evaluated that as a school district, it wasn't viable in any of those configurations. So I don't think that information has changed. I think the reality of all the options that are available are all the options that are available, that we've been listening to for hours today, and I think we, there would have to be changes in facts, right? Like, you know, it's a very fluid situation, and changes in facts can change the larger situation, but it, I think we evaluated on all the information we had, and there's not been a dramatic change in information. So I guess I would just say, we could only in that report, though, evaluate your viability as a school district. We just were doing it in the context of what you provided us, and I don't think anything about that information has changed. So I don't think you're wrong in taking away what we had for facts and what the assessment was. That's still, all we have for facts, and that's still the assessment. Am I getting that right, Oliver?
I think you have that right. Jennifer.
And I think I would just add that what the state board provided was a statement of preparedness, but it wasn't, you know, that, that was our communication to the town of Ripton, as to, or to the Ripton School District, what we felt was your preparedness or not. And then it's up to you to go back to your voters, and for your voters to make a decision about how they wish to proceed, and then, you know, we will make the determination of supervisory services.
You understand, we've been working in the context of, of not getting any help from, or feeling like people in power aren't, aren't going to support a project that we bring forth. So, you know, if we say, if we go against you now and say, we're going to build the supervisory union, how, how is that ever going to succeed?
So, Molly, it's not, you're not going against us, right? Where we issued an advisory, we were required to, under the law that was passed by the General Assembly, to issue a determination statement, and that's, as, Ripton as a school district, and that's what we, that's what we did. As far as, you know, positions of power, you know, the state board actually really doesn't have that much power on, on some of these, you know, on some of these matters, and, you know, we're, we're a volunteer board. I mean, I literally, folks, I mean, over the last two weeks alone, I have spent, because I've actually had to add it up, I've spent well over 80 hours now dealing with issues with Ripton and Lincoln. That's it. And I have a day job, right? So we're not, you're not going against us, and I don't want you to feel that way. We, we, we made a statement, you know, it's sort of our opinion about your preparedness. If, yeah, I, I don't know what else to say.
I get it.
Nothing's changed about your situation and your assessment from our feedback to you all, then I don't think anything's changed by virtue of today. It just is, we are in a position to make a decision on Lincoln, and that means these are the options. Like, we could create, you know, with all the votes happening, I think the thing we most don't want to do, we've certainly heard loud and clear, people do not want the state board involved in their votes. So I think we are doing our best to keep our hands off the scale in that, to take in information and give as much information as we can to a process that is on an absurdly tight timeline, to benefit the districts trying to craft budgets and communities trying to vote on, and, and children trying to stay in school.
So I, just, so I could be prepared for some questions from my community, I calculated how many school board meetings we've had in the last 10 months in Ripton. It's 39 in the last 10 months. I did the math last night. So all that said, we understand some of the challenges of being volunteers. We too have day jobs. And I do want to keep our comments brief, because I see we've been going for seven hours and 38 minutes. What I would just like to express is, seeing Lincoln up here today, having been in a similar place in Ripton, this process is pretty broken, and I don't know what the tools are to fix it. It seems like a lot of these solutions come back to local conversations. And I would just advocate, and I know this is beyond state board ad, beyond AOE, but just, if there was a better space to work through this, like, I think it would be good for the towns that engage in it, it's not a fun spot. I'm sure the people from Lincoln today are kind of taking it all in and adjusting. It wasn't fun for Ripton. It's not fun for the other districts. And so I think if there is some, a process that develops, I believe the AOE needs to come up with a closure report at some point.
You know, like how to close a school?
What's that?
Like closing a school, you mean?
I just remember in Act 176, or there's that charge in there, and if that could spurn a conversation about how to move this forward, because it's, I mean, I think there's a lot of unhappy people in this room.
And, and, you know, and I think, again, it all comes, everything we're, we've been dealing with, all comes back to concern around school closure, and it's a difficult topic, and one that the state board doesn't have a role in. I mean, we, we have no role in school closures. And, you know, we have, we're in an environment of declining enrollment across our state. We have been for 20 years, and, you know, every year, somebody says, oh, it's going to get better next year, and it just keeps, you know, so even if it plateaus, it's a problem, and it, it poses difficult questions for everyone involved. And, you know, these difficult conversations, what I, my observation has been, and I would say this is on both sides, there hasn't been enough movement towards compromise. And, and I, I think, you know, that's, that's where there needs to be some, some more conversation, because in the absence of compromise, we end up where we are today, right? Where, you know, nobody's happy. And, and ultimately, the state board is faced with having to make a decision that is not at the local level, because nobody at the local, local level could figure out how to compromise. And, and then we end up making a decision that is going to make one party happy, and one or more other parties very unhappy. And it's, it's a tough, it's a tough spot to be in.
Can I just say?
Yes.
Visiting old schools today, we certainly understand why you've had 39 meetings, and why you spent the time, and why that's important to you. It would be important to us, too. And I, I would hope that they can leave here tonight, knowing that even though the Lincoln-Ripton supervisory union isn't a legal option, or maybe I should say, from my standpoint, it's a legal option, but nothing I would vote for. So they don't want it. We don't think you're ready for it. I wouldn't vote for that. So if you go to your folks tonight, you can say, Lyle says, not that that matters.
No, that's very helpful, because, I mean, I'm probably voting yes tomorrow. I mean, I, I have come full circle to, to, to agree with you. We need to find local compromise, and I'd much rather be putting my effort in locally. But we, we still don't have power. We're still a town of 700 with a population center that absolutely obscures our democratic right. And so that's a trouble, that's troubling, you know, as an American.
And, and to point, the thing I found, you know, it's like, we're being asked to sort of forcibly assign someone to an unwilling partner, like, that's a terrible way to start any.
Terrible way to start a relationship.
Relationship. And, oh, by the way, and I, and I hope I, you know, some of the questions in the comments, I was, you know, I was trying to point out, is that you, you might be getting, asking to be forced into a relationship with an unwilling partner that has the power to make it not a great experience. And, you know, I'm just, I'm not sure that that's a good solution for anybody.
One tip I will give you that I think, there were several votes that were missed, and we all learned, right? And I, I think it was kind of like, we were in Twilight Zone, because it's like, oh, this is kind of where we've been before, like, oh, let's take more time and go back and talk to ACSD. And we, we did that really with a lot of intent, and those negotiations went nowhere for us last fall. And we really felt like, if you had kind of leaned a little harder over them, with the possibility that they might get an SU light assignment, that their board would have listened to our, our tiny voices a little more, and at least, I mean, they flat-out disregarded and asked for an article change last year, when we, we did your bidding. And so you're asking them to do the same thing, and so I guess I ask you all to consider, I know you don't have, you know, you said to me before, you don't have power to be a moderator, but we really wanted some moderation help, and, or at least some force behind our asks, because we didn't, we didn't get anywhere last year, and I thought we had some very reasonable asks. We were even just asking for changes in policy, and, and not charter in the end, and they, they wouldn't do it.
Oh.
I was going to say, that wasn't our place to do it, and the conversations are important. And I think, I am a big fan of sort of digesting things after, because I do think, and I'm, I'm trying to remember now, Donna and, and Oliver, the study that's required regarding school closure, and I, I think there's much to be learned, and I think probably, living with the new Chapter 11, or whatever Act 176 is, or I'm trying to remember all the numbers, you know, as we live through some of it, we may have the opportunity to inform any modification that happens moving forward. So I would love to keep that dialogue going and see where it can inform future work.
Yeah, and please, we'd love to be part of it, because at this point, I want to put my backpack into my community, and, and also keep shouting at that wall in some other way, because this has not, not been productive for any of us. And, I mean, I think it's been productive, but in a really thorny way. I guess that's how I'll say it.
It's been a learning experience for everyone, including us. So, no, we appreciate you taking the time to, to speak with us.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
That's a question for Molly. I'll leave the stage about one.
The vomero-nasal organ?
Yeah.
So we.
Good luck.
We had, just, just a couple remaining pieces of business. So we did have the item L, we did not conclude. I'm going to suggest, Dan, unless it's a real problem, that we postpone that?
Oh, yeah, no. I mean, the purpose today was just to get the conversation started. I would say it would be useful to have the board adopt an engagement plan. I'm happy to work with Kim and Tammy on that, if they want to give input relative to the EPOS work, but it'd be useful to have you adopted at the next meeting, so.
Okay.
L, we did not conclude. I'm going to suggest, Dan, unless it's a real problem, that we postpone that.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, the purpose today was just to get the conversation started. I would say it would be useful to have the board adopt an engagement plan. I'm happy to work with Kim and Tammy on that if they want to give input relative to the EQS work. But it'd be useful to have you adopted at the next meeting, so.
Okay. Wonderful. So that then brings us to item M, which is our final opportunity for public comment. Are there any members of the public with us today in the audience or online that wish to address the board? If you're online, or on the phone, rather, if you press star five, you can be recognized. I'm not seeing any members of the public. That then brings us to item N, which is election of a chair and a vice chair. So I will start with the vice chair and would entertain nominations for vice chair. Is there a nomination for somebody to serve as the vice chair?
I would nominate Dr. Colby.
Okay, Dr. Colby has been nominated by Lyle Jepson. Are there any other nominations?
Sorry, Dr. Colby.
All righty. Not seeing any, all those in favor of electing Dr. Tammy Colby as the board's next vice chair, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Oliver, can I interrupt just for a second? Do you want to let people know why we're taking an election off-cycle?
Oh, yes. So I will be, thank you. I will be stepping down at the conclusion of this meeting as your chair. So the board will need a new chair and presumably a new vice chair. So all those in favor of electing Dr. Tammy Colby as your next vice chair, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand. Okay, not seeing any, it appears that Dr. Colby has been elected unanimously. Congratulations. Next up is election of a chair. At this time, I would entertain a nomination for chair.
Jennifer Samuelson.
Okay, Jennifer Samuelson has been nominated to be the board's next chair by Kim Gleason. Are there any further nominations? Okay, not seeing any. All those in favor of the election of Jennifer Samuelson as the board's next chair, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand. Not seeing any. It appears that Jennifer has been elected unanimously. Congratulations. The gavel is all yours. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I've seen the.
Okay, it's been moved by Kim Gleason. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Tammy Colby. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. We stand at adjournment. Thank you.
Thank you for your service as chair.
Yes, thank you.